We have the full complement of the board here tonight. And first on the agenda is public input. Anybody have a hand up?
No.
There's more crap. Okay, all right, we'll move on to board member comments. I'll actually, Courtney, you said you had one?
Yeah.
Why don't you start?
So as this meeting approached, I had conversations with another people who were upset by things that were said in our last meeting. I think it's really important that we think about setting the tone as the board that we are, as the select board of the town, that we behave in a very diplomatic way. There's no need to criticize publicly people who are volunteers in our town government, or anybody else for that matter, I mean, staff or the public. So I just think it's really important that we consider our words carefully as we do our work. The folks that I heard from were, they're just really upset. These are volunteers on one of our committees. And so I'm really upset. You know, it's like I want to turn off my camera and turn off my microphone and leave the room. That's how upset I am. So I would ask that we make it one of our first considerations in our work, that we are civil, that we are not unkind. And I believe that we can do all of our dealings without being unkind.
I did, I had something in a, thank you Courtney for that, I appreciate that. I had wanted to thank two volunteers at the Stowe Food Pantry, who I have been working with. I just, I wanted them to get their due. So Rich and Sue Maratori are tremendous. They are the volunteer coordinators for the food pantry. They have turned on a dime to absolutely change the program to make sure that people were able to, our volunteer program, to make sure that we've been able to serve our most vulnerable people in town and surrounding towns. And so I had already come into the meeting wanting to thank them and then was on the phone with Rich for something else completely. And he let me know that it was just their 50th wedding anniversary this past weekend, so I wanted to congratulate them on 50 years of marriage.
And that's all I have.
Thank you.
That's big for many reasons, so thank you, Maratoris. Jim?
Yep.
I wanted to expand on something, on what Ms. Freesha said. I basically agree with her and everything she said, but you know, it's a good chance for me frankly to say something that I've been meaning to say for a while. I think that the points that Ms. Freesha touched on are a lot broader than just anything that happened at the last meeting or was said then. Every meeting of this board in recent memory, there's been one thing that we could all count on, and that is that somebody who wasn't present, some employee or a board member or a committee, was going to get criticized for something. They weren't present, it was not related to anything on the agenda. The usual suspects would be the recreation director, members of the recreation commission, Board of Health, Neshoba Regional Health Agent, even once I recall, the highway for their plowing policies, where they're poor plowing. I don't accept myself from this. I think as a guy with a sharp tongue on occasions, who's been on this board for 11 years, I'm sure that I've violated what I am concerned about. But I think it's important, I don't think we should mistake that kind of talk, criticisms about people who aren't even here to give us the other side of the story. Let's not confuse that for leadership. It's unnecessary. It's not even persuasive. You know, when that kind of thing is done, I find myself saying, well, I only know one thing for sure, that there's another side to that story. And then because the person isn't here and it's not on the agenda, I don't get to hear that other side of the story. I couldn't help but notice the Sudbury Board, Select Board has a policy prominently featured on it, is never, this is for their Select Board conduct, never publicly criticizing employee of the town. Concerns about staff performance should only be made to the town manager through private conversation. I'm not even thinking, I don't think I'm even going that far. You know, what I would suggest, in addition to what Ms. Freesha has suggested, which is a general concern about civility at these meetings, if we want to criticize, I'm not suggesting we always have to say nicely nice things about everybody, but if we want to criticize, let's either do it privately with the town administrator, or if it really must be done publicly, then let's, after consultation with the town administrator to make sure we're not violating someone's rights, do it as an agenda item with the person present or the town administrator's ready to address the concerns. That way we will get all of the story at once. Thank you.
Can you send the policy around that you saw from Sudbury?
Absolutely, it was at that civility, or that thing that you went and attended.
I had just a couple of, oh.
If I could, I think this is an incredibly important conversation. I think this ventures into needing to have an agenda item on it. I think this is important. I think things said in public meetings by public members of bodies is meant to be discussed, a public meeting for a reason. So I think we should have that discussion. I'm having that discussion now with many people about it as well. I also think accountability is hard. When you make statements on committees regardless, it's hard to be held to the standard that somebody disagrees with you and that they actually disagree with you to a large extent. So I'd love to see this on an agenda topic. I'd love to explore this Sudbury policy. I've also looked up some other policies as well. I think it's important. Interestingly, that Sudbury policy, you mentioned a lot about employees versus other board members. I think when you take a position as a public official, you accept a level of fiduciary duty and a level of willingness to engage in criticism. Part of the, that's the hardest part, I think, of this job is when you do receive emails that says, I completely disagree with you, I'm very angry, I'm upset, I'm this, I'm that. That is the toughest part of the job. So I'd love to see it as an agenda item for us to discuss this. I think civility is aligned, but I also think accountability is the counter of that. And it's important that we strike the right balance between the two. And to do so and to let it be known how strongly we feel about things is also not uncivil. It's actually important. For example, Ms. Freesha said a quote almost that I said the last meeting, I think that's great. I think we should express how angry we do feel because that is also part of our motivation of being here. So I think we should have this conversation because I think it's important as we explore the collaboration between boards that we're seeking to do as a board and that strategic planning. So I would like to see this. But I think I have a different opinion and different view based on with what board we're speaking. And it's not personal when you say you're angry about something and angry about a policy. It's about wanting to do what you think is right and that's why we're all here, is because we are trying to do what we think is right. So I'd love to see that on an agenda. I agree with Courtney and Jim that it's of incredible importance to discuss. So I just wanted to add my two cents.
With all due respect, I, the example that I wasn't being specific about, but I was, was not really a policy discussion. You spoke about being upset by something that you heard a committee member say in a meeting to their committee. And it seems it was taken out of context. This is regarding the Community Preservation Committee and their administration of the funds that are gathered by the town through special tax. And they are in their rights, that this is their province. In the statute, chapter 44b, section 7, at the end of the second paragraph, it says, "The expenditure of revenues from the fund shall be limited to implementing the recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee and providing administrative and operating expenses to the committee." In essence, it's their money and they get to say what happens to it.
So I don't, this is getting into a larger discussion.
It is.
I mean, I have some of the same concerns about how one interprets the CPC legislation. So I don't want to, we have a full agenda today.
I understand.
I appreciate that you pointed to that as an example, but I think we, you know, we have more to have.
Maybe a lot.
We need to give ourselves time to have that fuller discussion and maybe with the CPC members here.
But is the topic of civility and how we talk about others also going to be included?
I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, I think that that is, and it's almost like having that sort of reminder at the beginning of every meeting, like that we read a statement that says, we are committed to, like reminding ourselves that we're going to be respectful of ourselves, each other, volunteers in town, and obviously our employees who was involved. So, yes. I have two very less significant announcements. One is, for people who don't know, might have heard that Lake Boone closed over the weekend. It's reopened as of today, so if you have any concerns, the Recreation Commission is the one that's posting the update, but you can also, I guess, go to the Board of Health. I'm a little unclear who, I think Recreation's the primary place to look, is that right, to see if the lake is open or not?
Well, it's on the front page of our website.
It is now, yeah, okay. Because the Board of Health had lists of tests from last summer, but I wasn't sure if that was continuing this summer.
I have not seen the list. I have a meeting with several folks from Lake Boone Commission tomorrow. I can find that out.
But people should check the website if there's any question about whether you can swim in Lake Boone at this point. And the other thing, just mostly for the board, that the next meeting, we really need to finalize our work goals. So we have that list, it was way too long. So we will, we just had to pack an agenda tonight to put strategic planning on it, but we will do that at the next meeting. And we can send around the list again from the planning meeting we had in early July. Okay, and recognitions. I had a resident, James Robinson, said, "In the spirit of the just completed Olympics, he wanted to bring to my attention two women's sports teams that have achieved major titles. They both represent New England, they both have Boston in the name, but they have local residents, not from Stowe, but from our area. The Boston Renegades won the women's football national championship at the end of July. Sarah Tully's an Acton resident and Emily, I'm going to ruin her name, Bynnekey, grew up in Concord. And Boston Pride won the national women's ice hockey championship this spring after a shortened season. Another Acton resident, Mallory Salito, Salitos, I think, is on the team." So I just thought, especially because the Olympic's just closing, to recognize that women's sports are everywhere. And I hope that people, if you know people on those teams, that you congratulate them. And then finally, the PMC was held this weekend in a mix of virtual and in-person riding. We know Chris Spear from Stowe has ridden it many years and rode this year, and Kathy Sfera and Laura Spear were both on the command post, which they've also done for a very long time. So thank you to everybody who rode and participated in the PMC. It's a really important fundraiser for Dana Farber. So, any other recognitions? Oh, right, and tomorrow is Fire Chief Joe Landry's actual final last day, which is really sad, but great for him. There will be, I think it's an open house for the community wants to join from 2:00 to 4:00 at the fire station. So if you can even just stop by and say thank you and wish him well, we're excited for him and sad to see him go. Anything else? Oh, is it, oh yeah, look at that, boom, 7:15. Okay, so we're going to, we're going to have to hold off on appointments until after the public hearing because we did have it set at 7:15. So let me get, so I'm going to read the notice that was posted. "The Stowe Select Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, August 10th at 7:15 PM in the Warren Room in the Town Building, 380 Great Road, Stowe, Mass., on the application of Yolomoto Company, Austin Swinney, 92 Great Road, Unit 2, Stowe, Mass., 01775. For a Class II used car dealer's license under Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Sections 57 to 59, as amended. Persons wishing to be heard on this matter will be afforded the opportunity and may participate in person or via Zoom. Until further notice, in-person attendees who are not vaccinated will be required to wear a mask." This was posted in the Stowe Independent on the July 19th, 21st, 21 issue. I also just want to note that the butters have been notified and the list was included in our packet and therefore part of the public record. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Madam Chair, I move that we open the public hearing on the application for Class II license by Yolomoto Company at 92 Great Road.
Pardon. All in favor, we need to do a roll call. Mr. Salvi?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Ms. Freesha?
Aye.
Mr. McBurns?
Aye.
Okay, so, Mr. Swinney?
Yeah, can I take that, I'm vaccinated.
I think that's correct, yeah, thank you. So why don't you start by just presenting your request and then we'll go from there.
Okay, first of all, thank you for having me here. And I haven't met you guys. Hi, I'm Austin. So Yolomoto Co. is an online-offline retailer and broker of mid-market specialty vehicles, including models appreciated for performance, style, and status as emerging classics. With your approval, we would be opening shop in that garage on the backside of the property. And I personally am very excited about the opportunity and I think that we, I think that, I think that it would add to the local town as just a nice place to buy a nice car.
Great.
To enjoy the weather and stuff, thank you.
So I guess I'll ask the board first for questions. Anybody have anything? Yes, make it.
You can sit in the front, you can just have.
Yeah. You don't have to stand up.
Okay.
Don't do it, don't do it.
How long have you been doing this for?
This is a total startup. It's a complete departure from my professional career as a system engineer. And yeah, just something to do aside from working with my daughter and just kind of like have fun.
Excellent. And so the number of cars you're planning on having, I know it was in here and now I'm going to have to find it again and so I'm just, on the second page?
No.
Is, I think it's, 10.
10, 10 outside?
Actually, the facility fits, depending on how you shuffle it, about seven or eight.
Okay.
And then there is an additional 10 spots outside. I have a trailer and for the cars and, but yeah. Probably move them out and you know, when cleaning cars and things like that, but whatever.
Did you have questions, Courtney? No, no. Mr. Salvi, Mr. Burns, any questions? Go ahead.
So, hello, Mr. Swinney.
Hi.
So if I understand correctly, you're actually saying that you might, at any one time, you might have 17 to 18 cars onsite, seven or eight inside, no more than 10 outside? Is that right?
Yeah, that's a possibility.
That's the max.
It's the maximum, like it would not be more than that.
Okay.
So when you say that's a possibility, will that be the maximum or not?
Oh yeah, that is the maximum.
Okay, and how does the trailer play into this? I have that confused.
When, so like if I buy a car from an individual in Connecticut or something, I go down, put it on the trailer, bring it back up.
But you're not going to be storing cars in the trailer?
Oh, it's an open trailer, just.
Oh, okay.
Fits one car, it's like, I think, 14 feet long.
Okay. And my last question, materials say 10 XER spots as indicated on the map, and then I have this really hard-to-read map. I assume you're talking about the green area? This is Great Road here?
Yeah, it's the green area.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Burns, do you have any questions?
I just wanted to ask, the chief of police noticed sort of a geotag already for Yolomoto at maybe a Great Road, like no operations have started and you haven't actually been undertaking, you know.
Yeah, for example, mine, tagged it, it's just to reserve it.
I mean, I think, tagging on what Mr. Salvi said, our concern is just that we have a maximum for the, it's a large lot and we want to make sure we're not overrunning too much more cars than we expect. So hearing the max is fine, we don't, we're not concerned if you have less than that.
Yeah, I don't think I'll be overrunning anything. Yeah, it's just, that's kind of the allotted area. And by the way, like I would endeavor to keep it as clean and tidy as possible. I don't, I'm also concerned about the state of the rest of the place because, you know, it makes sense to present a good foot forward.
Let me ask a follow-up.
Okay.
It's just when we press you on the maximum, you seem a little hesitant, why is that?
I think similar to what the other gentleman, Alex, right, said, that, you know, it won't always be the number, like some come, some go. So, yeah.
So let's be clear. When we say maximum, that means some may come, some may go at less than 10, but never.
Never more than 10.
Ever will it be more than 10.
Yeah.
Is that so fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or outside of the area listed on there.
Or outside, right. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, we're going to be adding that, that'll be as part of your license, they'll have those limits on it just so we're all clear, right? So, and the operation hours, you said 12 to 7 Monday through Friday, 9 to 7 Saturday, and by appointment Sunday. I would, I would love to have one day where there isn't any activity on that lot, just for the sake of everybody, but you know, I understand by appointment, if someone, the only day they can come see an old car is on, I'm sorry, classic car, is on Sunday, that's fine.
Yeah, I think there'll be a lot of days without activity.
I just have a question. And it's more about traffic control in that parcel because you're sort of behind, so they'll have to drive, if I'm envisioning the parcel correctly, right, they would have to drive behind, turn around, like people who are coming in.
Yeah, I think, I think that the ingress is along that left side of the building.
Right.
Although it seems to kind of flow around to exit the other side too.
Okay. I feel like there are cars parked on, if I'm facing it. Am I correct? And that there's, sometimes are, from the other property?
Yeah, there's a shop.
Yeah.
That has some trucks.
Okay. I think I just. If they're, my bigger picture for, because there are multiple licenses sort of coming before us, is just making sure that there is some kind of a traffic flow that makes sense through that property, that's not going to impact a butters, that's not going to impact, I mean, possibly cause traffic. I don't know, Mike, maybe I'm too sleazy. How do you feel about that?
So our concern would be emergency vehicles being able to access all the way around the building, fire trucks which have at least, you know, 10 feet you're going to need with all the way around. You have TSS on the left side that does their work outside as well. So.
I think the, in terms of the space that I occupy, none of it is on either corner.
Right.
As long as there's room, that ambulances, fire trucks, police cruisers, and people can get around safely, you know, that would be one of our, you know, our concerns.
Yeah, I think so that the map shows that there's no, my land, or the land that I'm leasing, the land that Alex has, that provides that.
You're going to be parking on the other side of the lot, right? And then you're going to be bringing them into your shop. That's the lane of travel, you're going to be going across the lane of travel.
Yeah.
If I envision it.
Yeah, and I want to emphasize that our plan is to sell the cars mainly on the internet.
Okay.
We're not really planning to do a lot of.
So there wouldn't be like a lot of pedestrian traffic, people walking around checking the car out?
There would be none, probably.
Okay, that's good to know.
I'm guessing.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
One more, or questions from the board before I conference?
I have one more. You mentioned earlier that you're concerned about the current state of the larger lot. Could you sort of expand upon that? You know, as we're sort of thinking about restrictions here, obviously, we want licenses to be successful. And so I'd like to hear a little bit more about your concerns with the overall state and your business.
I think just tidiness, which I think, I think as you see the, I mean, I'm not, I can't really talk to what everyone else is doing, but I think when Darren leaves, then like, you know, it's like when you, someone moves out and another person moves in, kind of doubt he's going to leave anything.
I see.
But I don't know.
Okay, so I'm going to open, if there's people from the public want to speak on it, I just ask that you keep it as short as you can and just identify yourself first with your name and address.
Mark Forbes, Nine White Pond Road, 59 Adams Drive. I've got a couple of questions. The first would be is, in his correspondence with the town, Joyce, he says that he's going to only have eight cars on the inside, a maximum of eight cars on the inside of the building and a maximum of four cars on the outside. Why has that changed?
So, I can answer it because it was a mistaken answer. So my initial conversations with Austin and his partner were, what were your needs or your expectations for just, not now, but for the future? His expectation based on it being a startup, as he said, and bluntly, I'm sorry to say this, but financial limitations, they were not going to fill up their inside space and their outside space to start. So he expected to have at max four cars on the outside to start his operation and the rest in the building. But the area that he's renting accommodates 10 cars, which he doesn't expect to be able to attain. Hopefully in the future, he will be able to if the business is successful. To start, he would expect no more than four cars outside. But he's renting an area that would accommodate 10 if the business takes off.
Thank you, and can you just, for people who don't know who you are, identify yourself?
Boy, I was going to say something bad. I am Rich Presti, Doc Ward of 92 Great Road.
Thank you, Mr. Presti. And you had a second question, yeah?
Okay. I'm going to ask where this, I mean, the map that's there is so vague, you can't see anything. To determine where this car is going to be parked, are they going to be parked 30 feet or 40 feet away from the property? To determine where this car's gonna be parked, are they gonna be parked thirty feet or forty feet away from the property lines of the abutters? Uh, I noticed that on the leases, it shows the TSS is supposed to be parking vehicles in the front of the building. They park the buil- the cars all over the side of the building. So I'm trying, and they're supposed to be doing their work in the back of the building, according to the leases. And but you, you don't see, you don't, you know.
Okay, so we're only talking about this company right now.
But what monitors where they're gonna park is my question.
I thought it was pretty clear on the map. It's, it's in green and that's the area he's got, which.
I, I can't tell with it.
It says eighteen hundred and fourteen square feet.
For the building, correct?
Kind of extends.
It looks like it extends.
There's a car parked in one of them, yeah.
But I, I can't, I, I mean, it's not defined enough that you can see where they're gonna park. I, I live next door. I wanna know where it's gonna park.
Right, I understand.
I, I don't wanna say, okay, well.
So, Mr. Presti, do you have a different map than what we have? Do you have the same one?
No, it's just clearer and probably, like, Jim's trying to look at it miniature, but I mean, Mark, can I show Mark this map?
Sure, yep.
Sure, show me.
Hi, Mark. What are you doing?
I'm doing well.
Really good sleep, as usual. Uh, so that's, that's the building. This is the building.
Yeah.
We live here.
Yeah, don't worry, Lou.
So this is the building.
Yeah.
This is the entrance, this is the other entrance exit. At the very end of the building, Mr. Swinney's renting this portion of the building right there.
Yep.
He's got three spots, four spots in front of his door, extending this way up against the building, up against this lot. There's plenty of circulation, traffic, fire engines, etc.
So he won't be parking back here? So he's gonna be, he's gonna be front?
I know you're familiar with the site, but that's actually a house there.
Right, I understand.
He's not gonna park at the house.
Okay, don't be smart.
Trying to answer your question.
Right, okay.
You all set?
Yeah, I'm all set.
He won't park at the house, I promise you. That's K.
So, okay, Kathleen Fisher.
Yeah.
Um, One White Pond Road.
Yeah.
Uh, I've lived at the adjacent house for seventeen years, a couple of months after Rich Presti bought the property. And the structure itself has had a lot of changes. What, is there an actual garage door?
Yes, there is.
On that side there that opens?
Yes, there is.
Because I can't see that actual entrance from my property.
Okay.
That's completely screened from the back. And is a garage door there? How is it, um, is there drainage proper there? Is there a facility to get rid of oil and, you know, air conditioning fluid, things like that? Do you do work on the cars themselves and other contracts for hazardous materials? Any do you have restrooms? Those simple questions.
Yeah, there's a restroom there, um, and, uh, there's a drain in the middle of it. I think it used to be a detailing bay.
Where did that go?
Um, I don't know.
That's what I thought.
Uh, I have no intention of using it for anything. The, in terms of the, the, um, fluids from vehicles, uh, we'll have a service that collects those.
So that hasn't been set up yet? Do you, do you have a little?
Um, it'd be difficult for me to set up stuff for a company that is not licensed to operate yet.
That makes sense.
So, but, um, uh, you know, I drove a Tesla here. I'm an environmentally minded person, um.
I, I got a good impression of you, by the way. I'll be very pleased to have somebody who's tidy in the building.
Um, I will, uh, in, in fact, like, I did a little bit of research into, um, sort of green garage standards. I'm like using orange, kind of citrus-based cleaners versus, um, other things, um, petroleum solvents. Um, so we'll endeavor to have a clean business.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have someone online, Bill Byron.
Um, yeah, Mr. Byron, can you identify yourself, please, and?
William Byron, four sixty-nine Leeson Arrow. Uh, I just have a quick question for clarification. Is this a new license or a transfer of a license? Or is there going to be two, last two licenses on that site?
So this is a, this particular one that we're having the hearing for is a new license. The second one that we talked about last time that we're talking about again is a transfer. And then there's a third license that's not currently being used by Mr. Presti, but he owns a third license. So there's three licenses currently, well, if this is approved, there'll be three licenses on this property. Okay. Any, any?
Infinite Auto gone. I thought I read an article.
Correct.
That they were leaving the site.
Yes, that's the transfer.
That's the transfer.
Right.
So that's not to this gentleman, it's to someone else?
Correct.
Yeah, I think three licenses is a lot for that one site.
Well, we can't, at this point, take away the licenses that exist. That's an annual approval.
That's right.
And.
So the articles that I read, I, I thought they were transferring the infinite license to this new company that I read about.
No, that one's being transferred, um, to, um, and then I've gotta get his name right, so I don't screw it up. Car Lot Express. That's gonna be the larger business that's proposed on the left. This one is just in the back of the building that no one's gonna see.
Okay. So I misunderstood the article then, it said.
Well, it's a little confusing.
Infinite was gone and the license was being transferred to Yolo or Yono or whatever it is. I'd be.
Right. But no, that, that's, that's.
That was not correct.
That's not correct, no. It's a little confusing. I think we're all trying to keep this straight.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Byron. Anybody else? Yeah.
Prior to the zoning laws coming into effect into this town, there was only one dealership on that, on that lot. And that was Erkan Buick.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think this is a change of use, having multiple dealerships onto it. I believe a special permit should be required. We're gonna request that, ask for that.
Um, have we got any opinion on whether a s-?
Well, there's been multiple car sales there for years now. Has there been multiple? Well, there's been multiple licenses at that property.
Mr. Presti's never sold one car.
But he has a license, doesn't he?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, this isn't a back and forth.
Yeah.
Right, okay, so, so that's the answer to that question.
There, this is no change in use because there have been multiple licenses at that property for a number of years.
Maybe, did you wanna say something to that?
No.
Okay, all right.
I think Jim does.
Um, yes, sorry, yes, Jim.
A question from Mark, or really anybody. Does anybody, was anyone here when the Erkans were operating on the site? And do they have any idea roughly how many vehicles were on it then, Katie?
Well, I've, I actually lived here for forty-two years and I bought cars from Wayne. Actually got stepping stones into the building when they eliminated all the cars from the site and he built the shed outside. Can I have the permits for that? Because there was no car sales in the building for years.
Okay, the question was, can we, can we keep to the question?
And there was forty cars in nineteen ninety-two, I think he had forty cars on site. That was it.
Forty?
Forty, that he advertised. They have all the advertisements going back.
Anybody wanna take issue with that?
I would, I'm gonna take Mr. Swinney's tack and stand in the middle of the room. I've been vaccinated. Smallpox, but vaccinated. Um, so what I have here, contrary to someone who's lived here all their life, I have an affidavit, legal, signed, notarized affidavit from Mr. Wayne Erkan. He's a lifelong resident here also, his family own that property, probably leave if they're still alive, at this point, I don't know. Mr. Erkan stated that in nineteen sixty-eight, the year the zoning bylaws were enacted by the town of Stowe, our business had the largest sales volume in our history up to that time, in line with national sales of cars, which was also the largest in history. For comparison, national sales of cars were nine point six million vehicles in sixty-eight and only seven point one in two thousand and sixteen. And he went on to account how many vehicles were onsite at the time, just prior to zoning going into effect, which would constitute the grandfathering for the prior use. Nineteen sixty-eight vehicles onsite would have consisted of approximately one hundred to a hundred and twenty new and used cars, twenty to twenty-five employees' cars, forty to fifty clients' cars, and twenty to thirty vehicles of other tenants and their clients, for a total of one hundred and eighty to two hundred and twenty-five total vehicles onsite with regulatory. This goes on more. You wanna see it, Jim?
I was really just looking for a ballpark estimate.
Well, it's more specific than that.
And the cars were bigger then. Nineteen sixty-eight, they were wide, so. Jim, is it okay I call on another person while you're looking at that?
Yeah, absolutely.
In the back?
Okay, just a couple of comments.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Dorothy Granite, Eleven White Pond Road. I apologize if anything has already been said. I've been late. I agree, um, with Mark on the usage. What I recall greatly is the time period that is being debated in court right now about the nonexistence of actual use. And before I said we can't talk about the property, the property can be talked about because it's part of how the licensing is granted. A proper place has to be provided for the business if it's gonna get the license. I think that's in section fifty-nine, fifty-eight. Um, last week, Mark was not allowed to bring up or continue his question regarding the public water supply. So if this dealership is gonna have a hundred cars, I spoke with someone regarding how much the business can make selling these cars.
Can I just interrupt it? We're talking about this permit we just just determined, fourteen cars.
Fourteen cars for the.
This is for.
Nope, we're talking about another permit. This is a public hearing.
For that one, all I have to say is that having three licenses at the property is an increased use. Having two separate businesses at the property is an increased use. Mr. Presti never had a used car business. He did have my friend's car on the lot, a truck, which he used to plow to make his business look like it was open. And that's it, from having lived next to that property.
Thank you, yeah.
Hi. Uh, first things first, I would like us all to take a breath. This is getting to the point where we're not being as civil as I think we all can be in this room, okay? The second part of that, um, is that what we are doing tonight as a board is deciding terms around these licenses. It i- it is, Ms. Fisher, it is. We can decide, as a board, we can set limits as to how many cars are on a property. We are allowed to do that as this board. So while I appreciate that you are all abutters, I, I get it. Part of our job as a board is to license, to grant these licenses, or, um, do this license transfer in a moment, okay? And we're not going to do that without setting some parameters and limits to it. That is what we're allowed to do as a board. And I would ask that we get the emotions down a little bit and allow us to do our job in setting these parameters for these licenses, understanding that you all abut these properties, okay? But I'm respectfully going to ask that now, because I feel like we're getting to a point of not good, yes?
Asking for accurate information is important. And one of the questions about how many businesses can be on the property, whether it's an auto dealership or a detailer or a, uh, landscape designer, how the property is used, who has access to the different areas, uh, is really important. And whether or not you can have that many cars on one parcel is also important. There was a period of time where there were no cars. And I can give you all the information from all the different departments and memos from all the different committees that state frankly that there weren't any cars there for a period of years. And a lot of well-known volunteers in town who wrote reports. I have reams of paper. I decided that wasn't appropriate. But when Stepping Stone School moved in, I handled the rental. I didn't charge anything because we closed down Center School and they had to get out. What is used in that building and how many people have access to facilities? Parking, safety, drainage, water, septic, that's all critical to how many licenses you approve, if any, for a transfer additional. I have disliked this gentleman very much who put in for the application. But I think all the other areas on the property should be looked at and there should be a special permit before anything else is issued on that property. Because there have been complaints for, I actually didn't have any issues until about seven years ago, when there was clearing, massive clearing on the parcel, massive traffic, dust, dirt, drainage problems, uh, just a mess. And that was when the larger facility opened as an auto dealership. And I don't think it's fair to the abutters. Between lighting, drainage, everything else affects a wonderful new tenant. And I think he's a great asset. I'll be a hundred percent honest. I think he's great. I, I actually would love him to be there, but I don't want him to get in there and find out he's got a big mess. Or that he's responsible for drainage on the floor.
Okay, thank you. Oh, oh, Bill, I'm gonna get the guy in the back. Yeah, Bill, go ahead.
Okay, hi.
Hi.
Um, so I'm not getting excited, I'm just looking for facts. And, um, I don't wanna shut this gentleman out of his business either. I don't think it's going to impact the area at all. Um, I, the only concern I have is how many used car licenses are going to be in operation on this site. Mr. Presti is doing his best to run a business there, rental. He brought up the issue of Mr. Erkan and his dealership. And it isn't, it isn't so much the number of cars that's concerning me about that statement, is that I believe at that time, that that business was being run under one license on that site. Mr. Erkan had a, probably a class A license to sell new cars. And I don't know what he had when he get away with the main business and had a used car business there. I'm not aware of the type of license that was there. I just want you to consider, uh, the number of automobile licenses that are being, um, given to this site.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi.
You identified.
Marvin Giles, I'm fifteen Heritage Lane. I abut the property, just, I'm behind him, basically. So other than the town, I believe I have the longest shared, uh, property line with the property. Um, I wanted to ask a quick question and then make a comment. Um, how many, how many businesses are on the property? If, if, if we grant this, how many businesses are on that property?
Uh, I think four, is that right? Because we, are we counting TSS?
Just more than that.
Okay.
I, I can answer that, Katie, unless you wanna just do it.
No, it's, you're the property owner, so, please.
So there is Infinite Auto, there is TSS, um, which is car wrapping, basically go wrap cars, Saran Wrap. There's Ronaldo's Landscaping, which is on the back lower level. There is Morel Construction, who only uses the site to store vehicles. Actually, all the other users on the site leave vehicles and trailers onsite. There's no activity, there's no business being run on the site. They store vehicles. They leave in the morning, seven or eight. They come back at six, seven at night and leave the vehicles overnight again. So there's, right now, Infinite, TSS, Morel leaves vehicles which have not been moved in years. There's Ronaldo's Landscaping, there is Murphy Tree Company, young guy that lives in Stowe. Stady's Landscaping, one man band. A guy named Proya, who leaves a few pieces of equipment and vehicles there. And there is a fencing company. All these guys are on the back level, other than TSS and Infinite, so unless I've missed somebody, which.
D bus.
I mean.
D bus.
D bus.
I'm sorry, Katie.
D bus.
The bus company.
Oh, excuse me, D bus stores their buses to move the young lads of, and lassies of Stowe around to school. So there are eight, call it, operations, two of which are operating businesses and six of which simply store vehicles on the site. That's it.
Thank you.
And I, I do have.
Well, let him, he, he had a question after that, so, or a comment.
So, so my comment is that, you know, I think, I think what you're hearing from the abutters is a frustration in the fact that over many years now, the appearance of that property has just progressively gotten worse and more cluttered and more trash all over the place. And, and just more congested. And as an example, I think it was last year. And as an example, I think it was last year, all of a sudden I hear trees being cut down and some stuff being done there. And now I've got Ronaldo's Landscaping vehicles that are partly on my property. They're encroaching on my property. I was never notified of this. And so there's just a general frustration. That's why people keep bringing up the old stuff that you don't want to hear about. But it's frustrating because the place just keeps looking worse and worse. And I get it, he's trying to make money on a property that doesn't have water. But what we want to know is how is the... You know, what I want to know is how is this going to make that property better? Because we're tired of it becoming worse. And, you know, I will probably be making a complaint soon for you guys wherever. I have to do that about the vehicles on my property. But I know this is about this guy. But how is it going to be better? Like, what's going to be different than all the other times someone else came in and either encroached on our property or threw trash all over the place? I'm constantly cleaning up trash on my property. And I go hiking on the trail to the town forest and it looks like a dump for the first hundred yards. There's just no control of the trash. There's no attempt, there doesn't seem... I shouldn't say no, that's extreme. But it seems as though there's no attempt to keep the place clean and to keep trash in dumpsters and not blown all over the place. It's just, it's an eyesore from both directions, from the street and especially from our properties.
So I'm... My understanding is this hearing is that we're talking about this gentleman's application for this particular business on the site. My understanding that he has every right to apply for the license. The properties, we've confirmed they've had multiple licenses there. We understand that there's... He has the right to get a license there. I don't know how this larger issue of the larger property fits into that, honestly. You've got more experience on planning board. Do we have... I mean, we're not setting limitations on the whole property.
So I don't want to sound like I don't understand or I don't empathize with the situation. It's the fact of the matter in this moment is that what is being put before us are these two licenses. That's what we're doing. We don't have ultimate powers to do some of the things that I think you're requesting to be done or whatnot. And I don't want to move too far away from that given the fact that our purview right now are those two licenses. And so I would like to see what my other board members think as well. No, I mean, honestly, because I just... We could be here for a week at this point. And I just feel like we're hearing everyone, but we need to do this because it's feeling like we need to make a decision. So, okay, that's...
Sort of a procedural question.
Yes.
Or two. In our... In issuing licenses, what is the breadth of limitation that we can impose? And my second question is, is there a way that we can ask Mr. Presti if he would be willing to relinquish his license, which is perhaps not currently being used, in order to reduce the number of licenses that occupy the... And to address concerns by the abutters?
Can I answer your first part? Oh, sorry.
Well, I think, I mean, one of the things that we haven't consistently done as a board is set the limits on numbers of cars. And I think that's something Denise has stressed that we would be doing, starting now. I mean, we'll use new licenses. So I'm not so much concerned about if Mr. Presti decided he wanted to start... I mean, every, all the renewals come up in December. We can set a limit on how many cars if he decided to start using his license. I'm not... Right today, right now, I don't want to go there. I don't think it's fair to do that without a larger discussion.
Can I just ask one more follow-up? Is there a way that we can ask for perhaps additional buffering, fencing or landscaping to help just work the sightlines on the property?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes.
It seems like we've transitioned to board discussion. Were you looking for a motion to close the hearing?
Yes, yes, I am. Because I think we've heard everything we've...
We haven't heard.
Yes, we've heard plenty.
Not pertaining to section fifty-nine of the law.
I'm going to accept a motion to close the hearing.
Madam Chair, I move a public hearing for a Class Two license for Yolo Motor Company at ninety-two Great Road in Stone.
So we need a roll call on this? Oh, sorry, second, yes. Mr. Selby?
No.
Fresh up.
Hi.
I say aye.
Aye.
So the motion is carried and we are closing the hearing. I think, so now we want to make a motion to either accept or deny the license and with restrictions. So I first ask, can we confirm that we're going to say... I had it four?
Yep.
It is the numbers I keep getting, I'm sorry. Eight inside and ten, no more than ten outside.
So can I make an amendment to that?
Yes.
I think that, given the fact that the license will be up for renewal, I would feel most comfortable doing four inside, four outside for this initial license just because he had initially said he wasn't... You weren't sure whether or not. And then that sort of gives... I mean, it's four months, right? So you'll have an idea when you come back to us again if you need to ask for the additional six for outside. I just, I feel like I'm grasping at trying to appease and be reasonable for everyone. And I don't know if that helps a little bit and I don't know.
And you do understand, I mean, these are annual licenses that we have to... We come up in late November for the next year.
Yeah.
So that's what she's...
I was wondering why reduce the inside from eight to four?
I'm sorry, I meant it the other way around. I meant...
I thought the meeting was closed, the discussion was closed.
He's the applicant, so we can ask questions of the applicant. We're clarifying. You're a public. You're the public and he's the applicant, so...
Okay, so...
No, so eight inside and four outside is what...
Yes, that's...
Is that what you meant?
Ten and eight, yes. So four outside, just to, if we're minimizing the exterior issues for now. And then if it turns out... Because also, we're going to start going into the winter and you'll probably want to keep more of them inside anyway. Okay, so eight, four. The other thing, Courtney, can I... Oh, sorry, can I speak?
Yes.
What I wanted to say is, how I've understood the power that we have in the licenses are things like hours of operation, are things like when you get deliveries, when you get trash picked up, like, sort of things like that that are going to be direct impacts on the abutters. And I think that that's where we have the purview and we have that part of our licenses that is going to help, like you said, right? And that, or maybe. And so, yeah. So I think it's days and hours of operation, which I think we have.
And you said on the, I think the summary was mechanical, eight to five? Is that indoor time primarily?
Yeah.
Okay.
Question?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm finding it, I don't know if I'm the only one on the board, I'm finding it difficult to think about this and talk about it without talking about the other one.
Yep.
Can we procedurally combine them? Can we talk about it?
You could, you've closed the public hearing of the first one, so... You as the board can talk about both of them now.
I find it difficult to talk about the limits on Yolo's cars because it's kind of the tip of the tail of dog.
Right.
I prefer to talk about... I mean, I was actually considering an approach, let's talk about the overall...
Number of cars on the entire...
Number of cars. My answer, I hesitate to differ with Mr. Byron in the audience, I do that at my peril. But I don't really care that much about the number of licenses as about the number of cars. There could be ten licenses, but they're limited to two cars.
Right, right, I agree.
But I am concerned about the overall number of cars. My inclination was Yolo seems to be such a small operation to just let him have his... I mean, ten is not a big... Well, I don't know, I'm just saying what I'm inclination, but...
I do feel like this is the small one and it's mostly indoors right now. And I, even, I totally agree. I think it's all about the number of vehicles on the lot. But I think that this one, right now, if he's comfortable with saying four outside the lot, that we can finish this and then move to the other one.
Okay.
I mean, that's my feeling. Other thoughts?
Well, I guess I'd like to think about the total that we heard in the affidavit from Mr. Erkanen. If there were as many as a hundred and eighty cars on the lot, which seems like an awful lot of vehicles to me.
Yes, right.
I would be inclined to, just sort of mathematic... I mean, I would be inclined to say to ourselves, okay, what is our maximum number of vehicles for all? And possibly, the way I do things, I would just think, okay, so there's school buses, there's landscapers, there's... So maybe there's twenty vehicles there. And if it's not too harsh, you know, to limit these other two businesses in such a way that we feel that the burden on the property and the abutters is perhaps lessened.
So would you prefer waiting then on voting on that Yolo Moto until we talk about the larger?
Yeah, I'd like to mathematically decide how many cars everybody can have and then...
What do you think, Mr. Burns?
I think I may be in a minority here because I think I'm in a split position. I'm impressed by the Yolo Moto application. I think, when I think about the type of business and license and everything, I think it works. But I don't find myself in favor of the other Class Two. I have too many concerns surrounding the application information. Went back and re-watched our discussion from last time. So for me, from a strategy point, I think talking about both together makes sense. My personal opinion is, I think for Yolo Moto, I'm excited about having something that is talking green. I mean, just the overall aura of that is the type of business. And I'll have a more, I think, formal statement when we get to the end of why I'm voting now and I'll reserve that maybe for then. But when it comes to Yolo Moto, I like Meghan's suggestion regarding the numbers. I think they make sense. I think it's a growing business. I think it also lets him get on his feet. I think it affords quality check-in with the board. If we need to modify those restrictions, I see no reason to proceed in that fashion. I think that's great. I think my frustration in all of this is that we can't talk about the whole property as a whole and that we can't actually engage in this. And I think that's where a lot of the frustration in the room is, is that there's more than a Class Two licenses that are in front of us. So I agree with that. You know, I'd like to proceed, you know, along with Meghan's restrictions. And I do understand that by appointment on Sunday, I do agree with you though in your initial suggestion, Madam Chair, which was regarding having just a day of peace and giving a break. Because I think it's important that we recognize that there are folks that live around there and especially on the weekends are maybe trying to have their own, their families as well. And I think that balance is comfortable to strike. And so I actually sort of would support that notion of maybe keeping it to Monday through Friday and Saturday with Meghan's suggestion on numbers. That's what I would feel comfortable for Yolo can be.
So it seems like on the whole, we can just finish Yolo Moto? I mean, because I appreciate that there's this bigger issue of how much the numbers are, but we're still only talking about four from this company. And the real issue is how many the other company that's doing more the... Not only the bigger retail, but also very visible part of the property. So if people are okay with that, can we finish the Yolo Moto?
I can live with that, certainly. I think we need to be specific about the conditions.
Yes.
So we're talking about no more, I'm just going to say, I think, no more than four cars outside. Again, we don't care, you can cramp twenty into a space if you want. I'd like to suggest a condition that, and this is more for the next one, but it can apply to Yolo, that they provide a specific layout of how the cars will be spaced and get the approval of public safety to make sure that there's hours. I'm getting confused now, eight to five, Monday through Friday. What on Saturday?
Well, it's eight to five for mechanical, so it's basically indoor. And then sales, the way it was written, was twelve to seven, Monday through Friday, and nine to seven Saturday.
So just the hours as written in the application?
The summary that... I just want to make sure that, on the motion, that we're on the same page.
So say it again, because I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, so sales, twelve to seven, Monday through Friday, nine to seven on Saturday. Mechanical, eight to five, Monday through Saturday. And if absolutely necessary, open by appointment on Sunday. Or we could just say, no.
No, it's fine. I'm sorry, I just wanted to also... So delivery hours, I would like to stipulate that it's during the days and hours of operation as someone who used to live next door to me.
Yeah, right, school bus delivery.
Does that include by appointment on Sunday? Are we taking out Sunday?
I don't know, are we taking... What's the pressure on you if we say nothing on Sunday?
What if I said nothing on Monday?
Well, it's the idea that, as Mr. Burns was saying, you know, sort of to keep the neighborhood quiet for one day. I mean, we don't know about the landscapers, but...
I think if that's our goal.
Right.
Nothing, no appointments, because, you know. Unless you're going to put a limit on the appointments.
All right, so delivery hours Monday through Saturday, hours of operation.
Would you be willing to try the no appointments on Sunday for short term?
That's true, sure.
And we can revisit this when the license...
All right, we're going to say...
Well, I guess my concern is that I think for the type of car that like people will be interested in seeing them and buying on the weekend, since it's just kind of a weekend car, not like a pressing Monday through Friday type thing.
I think I'm okay with by appointment here as he has stated that most of his business is going to be online.
Yeah.
I think it's like that other license that we had.
Right.
So if I ask back, deliveries then for the Sunday?
No. I think deliveries on Sunday.
Test drives. If you want a motion, you'd better ask me to do it quick. Well, I know where all this is.
Yes, Chief.
You stated the mechanical stuff with the inside.
Yes.
Okay. I can see getting phone calls about whether or not the door is open, the door closed.
So it actually just said mechanical, it didn't say indoors. That was sort of the clarification, okay.
I understand that. We've gotten, you know, my, some years of experience, the coast of the station, especially with like outside, what does a building permit, like building permits have? Outside building permits? What does outside work mean? Does that mean inside work can happen? So these are just some experiences that I've had.
Okay.
I think that should be just something noted, at least.
Okay.
Does that affect the motion?
Well, because it was stated mechanical was eight to five. And the sort of clarification is that that's mostly indoors. But I don't think, that's not how it's stated in the application, that it just says mechanical. So we'll leave it as mechanical.
So just leave it at mechanical or say indoors?
I'm more comfortable leaving it the way it was applied for, it was mechanical.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, I move that the select board approved the Class Two license for Yolo Moto... Yolo Moto or Yolo Motor?
Moto.
Moto Company at ninety-two Great Road in Stone with the following stipulations and conditions. No more than four cars outside the building at any one time. A specific lay... A specific layout of how cars for sale are to be spaced shall be developed and approved by public safety before operations begin. Hours of operation for sales of twelve PM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, and nine AM to seven PM on Saturday. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And mechanical work of eight AM to five PM, Monday through Saturday, and mechanical work by appointment only on Sunday. Further condition that deliveries only on the days and hours of operations, uh, but not on Sundays.
And I think you left off number of cars inside.
I did. I thought we weren't gonna do that. I can amend my, my motion.
Yeah, no, we're doing that eight.
Uh, to be eight inside.
Up to eight cars inside, yeah.
And you did not include Sunday by appointment under the sales operations.
That's what I did.
No.
It's not mechanical, it's, it's sales.
Oh, it's sales.
Yes, not, no mechanical on Sunday.
I'm gonna redo my motion.
Joyce will love you.
Awesome.
Um, so I didn't do by appointment Sunday and the other one I did, I, oh, okay. So, Madam Chair, I move that the select board approve the class two license for YOLOMoto Company at ninety-two Gray Road in Stone with the following stipulations and conditions. No more than eight cars out, I'm sorry, four cars outside and eight cars inside at any one time. The development of a specific layout of how cars are spaced and approval of public safety of that layout before operations begin. Hours of operation for sales of twelve PM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, and nine AM to seven PM Saturday and by appointment on Sunday for mechanical work, eight AM to five PM, Monday through Saturday. Deliveries to the premises only on the days and hours of operations, but not on Sundays. Uh, this license is valid through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one and subject to annual renewal thereafter.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, any clarification? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
You're all good.
Could I, could I, uh, say one more thing?
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, I wanted to, um, thank Joyce very much for helping me through the application process. Um, I did not expect someone to be as, uh, nice and welcoming.
Well, that's great.
Supposed to be.
Make sure the committee hears that, so.
So can I?
Yes.
So if you can, um, speak with the chief and, and put forth your plan, and then once we have that, I will write up the license for the board to sign at their next meeting with the conditions. And then you can pick it up or we can drop it off.
Right, thank you. Okay, so we're not going straight to class two. We're gonna go back to the appointments, because I know there's some people who are here for that, I think. Uh, there's certainly some people online, so, um, this won't take too long. The first appointment we have is for, um, a renewal of, for, to a five-year term for, um, Andrew Bluestein to the Economic Development and Industrial Commission, uh, expiring June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Andrew, for those of you who might not recognize the name, is Emma's Cafe. I don't, is Andrew on the call? Not that I see, no. But I think we're all pretty familiar with him and, um, I will, unless anybody has any conversation, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Andrew Bluestein to the Economic Development and Industrial Commission for the remainder of a five-year term, expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, great.
Thank you, Andrew, for stepping up.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Andrew.
And for having a great business in Moreauville. Um, and then the next is to appointments to the Gleesendale Local Historic District Study Committee, which is a new committee, um, that was posted last year, didn't have takers, got takers this year, which is great. I had a question, um, and I wanted to ask the board. So one of, when we did the posting, it, it asked, well, initially, we asked for seven people, but because we couldn't come up with seven last year, we reduced it to five. Um, one of the skill sets, uh, for this was architects. And I don't believe any of these people are architects of background. Um, and having been involved in numerous historic district issues, um, it's really valuable to have an architect. I'm wondering if the board would be, um, open to creating a, like an, either an adjunct or an advisor to, I have somewhat, uh, there's a local architect who actually worked on the school building committee with me, Amy Hastings, who would be interested in being an advisor. She doesn't have the capacity to be a full-time member anyway. And I don't know if we need to make it formal or not, but since it's a new committee, I thought I would raise that, um, before we get into the appointment of the five people who are willing to step up to the committee. Is that something people would be open to?
I think it's great.
I don't know if we call it a, um.
Like an associate member?
Like an associate member?
I'd prefer that they just make up their mind, their own associates.
Well, I'm concerned about not having an architect, because I, I don't wanna take away from these five people who are willing to do it, but I think it's really important that we have an architect, um, involved in the project.
I don't feel that urgency. Um, my, my recollection is that the, this was somewhat by statute. Uh, because I remember being surprised that we had to have somebody from the real estate board on it. And I think the legislature and their wisdom, if architect were the.
It is actually asked, the BSA was asked for recommendations. They just get back to the Boston Society of Architects.
I think that was because the statute requires it.
Really?
I, I would prefer just to leave it to the individuals. So I, just personally, I'm not necessarily in favor of it. I mean, if, if they, in the course of their work or in what they plan to do, think that an architect will be helpful, then I think they could, they could add one as an associate. I don't feel like, I don't know, I don't feel like telling them they have to have an architect.
Perhaps Ms. Hastings could attend a meeting on her own and be friendly.
I, I just, I'm, I'm, there's a lot of problems with historic districts that get into, people don't realize what they get, they're, get approved into, and then there's restrictions on their homes and they don't understand the implications. And I think an architect on the committee, I mean, I, it's really important to me, there, this is a great mix of people. There's people with historic, planning, neighbors, and, and real estate. These are, it's a great group of people, but I think the one thing that's missing is, is that architectural, what does it mean to be a local history, historic district? Um, and, um, Amy's, uh, Hastings has actually worked on numerous, uh, historic buildings, including the old, uh, what's it called, the, the jail downtown that's now Liberty Hotel. Um, she was on the architectural project. So there's, there's a lot of issues that come up around historic districts. And I, you know, I feel pretty strongly that, that this is, I can make a motion that we create a, uh, you know, an associate position for this committee, if that's the easier way to do it, but.
And that raises that we're gonna start creating associate positions for other committees, which up until now, they've all picked their own associates. I, I mean, I trust these people. If they think they need an architect, they'll have an architect. I don't like the idea, frankly, of the sort of precedent of telling a committee that is designed to be local, you have to have an architect, and oh, by the way, we like this one. Amy's wonderful, from what I remember, but I, I just don't like going there.
Well, it, it was part of the request. I mean.
But here, so my issue is that she didn't submit a letter.
There's that too.
Well, it was sent to the Boston Society of Architects and people don't all see, as we know, people don't see things on our website. And it was up there for a year.
It's, it's fair. I just, I, so having had some historical experience with this committee actually getting off the ground.
Mm-hmm.
I just sort of feel like I don't wanna add any more terms and conditions to it, because I think they've got important work to get started. And to Jim's point, I think that if they do find that they need an architect, I certainly know at least two of the people on that committee are gonna raise their hand and say that we need to add somebody. So, um, that, my two cents, but that's what it is. Eric?
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, I, I, um, I agree that I think an architect could be helpful. Um, I'm not sure that I would go as far as us instructing them, but I, I do think that it's important for open meeting law, as they are meeting, uh, that if she's going to be contributing significantly, that making her an associate member would be, I think, the prudent thing to do, just in terms of, of running the meeting and ensuring that, you know, folks know that the reason why, uh, she can actually, you know, address and, and sort of be part of that, you know, in-depth conversation is because she's actually, you know, an appointed member. And so I would, I would just like to see that. Um, but I'm not sure I would go as far as, as appointing her, though I, I do greatly think that she should be helping the committee as much as possible.
I mean, it does get to our.
Procedural question?
Yes, right.
Can we revisit this, um, topic of, of the associate at a later date? And add it if it seems like, like they all get together and, and it's working and, and yet we should have, um, that person be a more formalized member? Could we, can we, can we do that? Can we just amend our, our, um, the, the, I mean, we would be amending it at this time anyway, the, whatever it is, the, the, um, sorry, the action that we took to create the committee in the first place.
Yeah, I, and I think once it's committed, then it is their job to create their own.
In the, in the. Effort to continue to move along, perhaps we could.
No, I, I'm, I'm fine.
Do it again.
And, and there are, um, I mean, I think this brings up the larger issue of people not seeing what's, you know, what's being asked, you know, what committees are out there. And that's why I've been, you know, hoping we're gonna get more, you know, we can figure out a way to get more people seeing these postings. Because the fact that nobody responded to it a year ago, you know, we did do enough, we got these answers from the Realtors, mass Realtors and that, you know.
I also know a couple of people.
And there's other architects.
So I, I will bend their ear.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I mean, there are also other architects in town that it's not just Amy. Those, yeah, I just happen to have a conference, I was actually asking her for suggestions, so, okay. So, take the motion.
Thank you, though.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint the following members to the Gleesendale Local Historic Study, Local Historic District Study Committee for terms expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two and subject to annual appointment thereafter. Meg Costello, Ev Fisher, Jennifer Giro, Catherine Hammel, and Dot Spalding.
Second.
And I don't know if any of them are on the call. Is Dot, oh.
There's Dot.
There's Dot. Hi, Dot.
You have to unmute.
Hi.
Hi. So, um, I mean, I, we know you as someone who's very involved in the history of Stowe, but you wanna tell us a little bit?
You have to shut off the other computer.
Well, I grew up in Gleesendale and I own property down there. And it's a very interesting area. Yeah, the historic people that we had do the study for the town, um, were so enthusiastic about that area. And it would be nice to do something to entice people in that area. And how it turns out, we'll have to wait and see.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm glad you stepped up and, and for the rest of the group as well. Um, if I, there's nobody else on the, right? Um, but I know, um, well, a lot of people know the two Realtors in town, which is great, been involved in lots of things. Both Jennifer and Catherine are not shy about raising their hands, which is an awesome thing. Um, and Ev Fisher also lives down there and Meg lives down there and have been involved in, um, the, some of the charrettes that, uh, I think Dot was talking about, right? You did one, is it Boston University Group that did the charrette?
Amherst, I think.
What was it?
I think it was Amherst.
Oh, was it Amherst?
No, it was a group from Connecticut, a historian from Connecticut. They wrote up all the forms and data sheets of that area.
Okay.
Took that area as a prime location.
Great. Okay, any other comments from the board before we vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you all. Look forward to it. Appointment of dispatchers, uh, for public safety? Oh, you, you moved on. Um, you wanna speak to this?
So continuing the many transitions we have with the police department, uh, Sean Marks was promoted from part-time last, uh, last meeting to full-time. Uh, he's already starting, worked out really well. Uh, but that left us some openings. In fact, we have no part-time dispatchers as of right now. And we looked at the list of candidates and we interviewed them and spoke to them. Um, and the four individuals that we're looking at for you guys tonight to recommend, are gonna fit in well. One of them is gonna just do per diem only. We still have between sixteen and twenty-four open shifts a week that these other three will fill in. So they'll work between one and two times a week for us, which will keep their skills fresh and, uh, and up to date and, uh, working for us. And they'll also fill in per diem, so, um, I'm really excited to have, uh, both Laurel, Laurel, Steve, Kristen, and Desiree all appointed. Uh, you know, hopefully you guys accept our recommendation.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the chief?
Important question, how do I say Laurel's last name, Brazal?
Brazar? I think it's Brazar, B-R-A-Z-A-R.
No, there's no R.
Oh, did I spell it wrong?
Is there an R? It's supposed to be in there?
No, yeah, I'm both, both the letter and the R.
B-R-A-Z-A-R-L.
So just pretend there's an R in there and then don't say it.
It's a Boston accent. You can say anything.
I move to appoint the following people as part-time dispatchers for the Towne Stowe Police Department for terms expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two and subject to annual appointment thereafter. Laurel Brazal, Stephen Walsh, Kristen Severtz, uh, and Desiree Rodriguez.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, great. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Be a relief for all of you.
Yes.
Okay, um, we are now, um, coming back to the transfer of class two license from Infinite Auto to Carlot Express, which we started at the last meeting. I just wanna, um, remind people where we ended up last time, which was, um, we needed to, to clarify some of the information, um, that we had received or not received. Um, there's some miscommunication around ownership. We have been, uh, those issues were resolved, that we've confirmed that, um, you know, uh, Sevchenko, Mr. Sevchenko has, uh, was manager in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-one at the Acton location. He was noted as owner at the very beginning of that business in two thousand seventeen and continues to be an owner from what we can see. We never got to the, our, obviously, the large discussion we were starting to have earlier about the number of cars. But before we get into that, were there any other clarifying questions or things left over from our last meeting that the board wanted to either ask Mr. Sevchenko or discuss with the board?
I'm slightly confused by one thing you said. You said listed as an owner in two thousand seventeen. I believe he wasn't an owner per testimony last time. And now, uh, just for clarification, just wanna make sure that the testimony last time was that he was an owner starting, I believe, in nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, and that he was a manager only in seventeen and eighteen. You've noted that there's ownership in seventeen?
I went through the paperwork and they, the articles of incorporation of the business, he was on that.
So, so he will, because it's the amended one, which is the current, where he is an owner currently? I don't know that we have a, I don't believe we have an article from.
Oh.
An amended article, because this should have been amended if there was a new owner. It would make sense that he's on there currently, just because he is actually a co-owner today.
But, but, but.
I thought it, I thought it.
So it looked like Wheeler Dealer Inc.
Yeah, right.
Was always the owner and technically the applicant. But it also looked like, for all of those four years, I think, Mr. Sevchenko was a president of that corporation and a director.
Right.
And for one of those years, the last one, was also the manager. So, just to tie this up, I shared the concerns with Mr. Burns about the statement on the application to us. I find myself thinking, it was technically incorrect. It was a bit sloppy. But I do think personally that it's within the realm of, I can see why he considered himself having applied for a license before, to a layperson who isn't really familiar with all this stuff. Being president and the director of the corporation, he would consider himself to be one of the owners. That's just me, you know, I think it was technically incorrect, but, um, I can see it being within the zone of reasonableness.
I mean, I think the, the problem, the fault is in the form, it's very vague.
I don't think so.
Well, you're a lawyer, Jim. I mean, no disrespect to lawyers, but, you know, I, I would have read it similarly to what he did.
When people apply for stuff like this, they're supposed to be specific. He could have made a note, um, but again, I'm not faulting him for it.
Okay.
I'm considering it to be within the zone of reasonableness. I am glad we asked the questions, though, considering what we heard from Acton. Because based on what we had the last time, it was more black and white. He says he's an owner, no, he's not. Now I see it's in the gray. And I, you know, frankly, to use a, a colloquialism, I'll give him a pass on that one. And since I got the floor, I might as well just say, my other concern was the chief's statement about wish there had been fewer police interactions. I'm gonna ask the chief, serious, I'm gonna ask the chief if he cares to elaborate on anything like that. The only thing I saw in the record that we had before us from Acton was, um. a rather dramatic failure to comply with lemon law stickers in 2018, but then a rapid correction by 2019. Were you talking about something else that you care to share? You don't have to, I just, I have to give you that opportunity.
Yeah, no, that was one of my concerns, the increase, that, that particular call. That was, and so that was a concern, that there was a police response to a business. We've never had that in Stowe. You know, well, I shouldn't say we never, we've had that in Stowe. And so that's always a concern when there's police responses to businesses, especially for customers that are upset. So, you know, as we stated the last time, that was brought out by the town administrator about that. And I did speak to Mr. Presti about that. And he understood that that was a concern, because he did the same public records request that I did. I've yet to speak to Alan, so I have yet to speak to him about anything other than that. So, that would be one of it. And then I think the other concern is too, which you guys have addressed in the last license, is the placement of the vehicles. That, that is also another concern of mine, and public safety too. How do we get around that property? Can we still get around that property too?
Would it be helpful to share what the police, because there's an aura of something is really wrong?
I think, let's, let's hold off on that. I just want, I wanna focus on what the board's questions are first, so.
Well, I'll just wrap up and say, the only thing in what I consider to be the record about police interactions, given what the chief has said, the only thing I consider to be in our record is the lemon law sticker thing in Acton, which you don't need to explain. At least not right now, unless you want to, but.
Other questions on the board before, I mean, I do, we're gonna get to the big one. But I'm, are you guys not, I mean, I'm looking at the, the original articles of organization when the, when the business first started and he's listed on it as president, 2017. It's page 71.
In our packet?
In our packet.
Madam Chair, I think the, it's just a technical difference between president and owner. Are just two separate things. President doesn't necessarily mean owner. So, in our, in our crazy weird legal world, those are, those are different. So I just wanted to make sure that I was, making sure that the record was clear, based on how.
So, yeah, I think, so my concern, back to what Ellen was saying in the form, is it's the people who will serve as the directors, president, treasurer, and secretary of the corporation. And nowhere does it say owner. Like, and so I can see how that would be, that president would equal owner, perhaps.
So if anything, it needs to just take into account the fact that many of these things are now owned by corporations.
Right.
Exactly.
Right, I mean, that's really what it comes down to, right?
So it was individuals that done.
So possibly it needs a follow-up question about, have you been associated with, or have you been an officer, director, shareholder of a corporation that has applied for?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because he also signed on the lease from the beginning, which to me is, you know, you're taking on a responsibility by being.
Right.
I mean, that's really what it comes down to for us, right? It's like, who's, who's taking responsibility for using this space, you know, on Great Road? And that's the lease, whoever signed the lease.
Who do we talk to when something goes right?
Right, right. Yeah, right. Yeah. So, so Alex, do you wanna, you wanna have, I mean, I think you should have the next say. Do you have anything else you wanted to add?
I was just pointing out with a few comments, if you, if you let me, if you have some comments about it. So basically, police interactions, you know, it always happens. It is, you know, no way that I can say to the customer, oh, no, you, you can't do this, or you can't do that, you, you can't call police, or, you know. All those times, police come over, they tell people, look, if you have complaints, you can leave the car, you can go in the court, you can do this, they offer you this and this and that. There's no safety issue, nobody's threatening you. It's a completely civil matter. Don't call 911, you have a complaint, go police, make it, you know, safer. And then people still call 911 to make some, you know, pressure on the dealer and, or give us our money back. We're not happy with it, no matter what we did wrong, or it's all your fault. So that's basically, there's no way we can stop it. We're in four years, selling like around 250, 300 cars a year. We haven't had even one single case in a small claim court. So all the issues resolve beside the court. I guess that's a good result in terms of like, what kinda like business we're running. The, the level of communication with the police is just basically, never comes from us. We try to resolve it, but some people, they have their own truth, right? And they just, oh, this is how it's supposed to be, you guys not right here, you're not right there, give me my, my back. So that's the reason for that. It might be happening the same way here. There's no way I can control that. If I would be selling maybe like 10 cars a year, they're probably not gonna happen maybe once in five years, but with like 200, 300 cars, it just statistically may happen. The other thing about the, oh, lemon law thing, yeah, so you issued the, I can give you the paper saying that, you know, we in 100% compliance with all the lemon regulations. I have the paper, we just put it on, on a sticker, I mean, on a wall, you know. If you want, I can submit that. That's basically all the comments.
So, I, I was gonna ask, have you, you know, we talked only very briefly about the number of cars you wanted to propose. Have you, have you thought that, I mean, especially in light of the conversation we had earlier? Do you have a?
In terms of cars, based when I'm, when I was looking and offered it up, you know, that property place, I was, I was under the impression that it had the license for 100, 100 plus, maybe like a little more, so 100 plus as the maximum capacity, looking at that lot, okay? So basically, the way I take it, like I rent the bus and the bus is capable of carrying 30 kids in there, but maybe I'll be carrying five kids, seven kids. I don't wanna be penalized for having like 10 kids, right? But structurally, you can fit 30 kids. How many cars I will probably handle, I'd be happy with having, you know, if I would see 50 cars on a lot ready and set up, I would be happy on that level. But this is like, I don't wanna be penalized or be limited. If I have 60 or 70 cars, sometimes you have a slow market, you can fill up the lot and then work it out slowly. And then, some months is you can't buy anything because of how crazy the market is. You're kinda shrinking, shrinking, shrinking. So like on the location we're running right now, sometimes we're filled. We never exceed the amount the license, I mean, the amount of cars the license gives us. Sometimes we have like 30 cars where the license is 80. So basically, my idea is not to fill it up with like junk there and have it sit and have like people shuffling around. My idea is to have like 40, it's basically, it's gonna be very similar to what we have in Acton right now. You can drive, it's like five minutes away from here. It will be very similar operation, very similar cars. That's what I, you know, experienced to do so. But I'm not looking to fill up with like 130. I can't imagine being responsible for that many cars. Like I said, I'll be happy with having like 50, maybe 60 cars being ready. They're probably gonna be the next level for me, but as of now, that's basically my number that I can somehow work with, okay? Basically, whatever that location had right now, that's very similar to the space that we're gonna use. In this market, I can't see even 50 cars. But I would like to have the capability of the lot, if it's suitable for 100 license, I mean, 100 cars, like, you know, physically, you know, geographic or whatever. So I want you to say, okay, this lot is okay for 100 cars? What are you gonna do there? That's basically, just don't exceed it.
Right, yeah.
Just personally, I can say around 50, 60 at this level.
Well, I think, you know, I, I think we can all agree that one of the big things here, it's very visible, right? And it's right when you come into town. So we want it to look good. So we don't want you cramming, you know, 40 cars in the front row because you want everybody to see them, you know, I mean, I, I don't know what the number is. But so it's, it's both about the number total, but also about how, how you work, and obviously working with public safety to make sure that they're not blocking emergency access.
When we have cars right now, our logic put nice cars, the one that's ready for sale at the front end, we have a couple of rows, it's very similar at this location. The cars nicely looks nice, maybe more high-end than more junky ones, you know, like a cheaper ones, you know. We put them on the back, or the cars that's not ready, that not like detailed, they on the back, they not visible. The front row, it's all visible, you know. Just put on like Google Maps, you'll see what we have right now. That's what I'm planning to have.
Sorry, Mr. Presti, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna call on you eventually, but I just wanna make sure the board gets their questions in, okay? Zach, I think you had something you wanted to say earlier. Do you wanna, are you ready yet, or do you wanna ask more questions first?
I don't know if I have any more questions, so I guess I'll postpone until we're in our deliberations.
I mean, my, you know, this gets to the, the really, the crux is like, well, what's the right number for this lot? And, and, you know, knowing that there's things in the back that we're not currently dealing with, but I think, you know, if, if we're looking at that side lot that we're all used to seeing, the cars are there, yeah.
I think, so where I'm sort of landing on this is to, to be a little conservative with this initial issue of the license, knowing that it's going to come up. I don't want to give you, I, I, you're a new business to town, this is a new thing for us. We've had Infinite there for a really long time. And so I feel like because we're in a position where it's just a short license right now, before you come up for renewal, I sort of land on the side of, let's be a little more conservative with the number of cars that we do. If you, if it's like clean and tidy, like you're promising and it looks good and whatnot, then we could explore adding to that. But that's sort of, that's sort of my initial feeling right now. Especially given the fact that the market is a little not hot right now.
You're talking about like limiting right now and then if you want.
Limiting right now and then upping it, basically, if you.
That won't work, you know.
No.
Because, you know, it's not a hundred dollar, you know, that I have to pay for this?
You have to pay for an, an annual permit.
No, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about renting the property. It's not a couple hundred bucks, you know, and.
I see.
You know, it's a sufficient amount that you have to plan, even like having the license for three months and then, you know, investing all the money and then all of a sudden, we change our mind. We don't like you here, go somewhere else, you know, that's still risky.
That's fair.
At that point.
May I answer that question?
Yeah.
I'll zero it up on that. You suggested 50 cars, does that meet your requirement?
I'm not suggesting 50 cars.
You proposed earlier, and if we were to accept your proposal, you said 50 to 60 cars. If we were to accept your proposal of 50, does that meet the threshold that you just suggested?
No, it's not a proposal on my side. I'm saying that in reality, the way the dealership works, okay, the way I see it, is like a size that the lot capable of fitting cars, right? And then you work with that, that limit, that I'm guessing that's what I discussed. I'm thinking that I can, you know, first maybe a couple of years, that's probably gonna be the number. It's not that easy to run that many cars, but I don't wanna be limited by that amount, you know what I'm saying? In summary.
You, you are gonna be limited by, based on the license that we are going to provide to you.
Exactly.
So that's why I'm sort of proposing a meet in the middle for you. Because we, because historically on that property, that property, that renter has, has been problematic. And so we wanna make sure that we're not just transferring a license to somebody who's going to, to sort of, it seems like you're not going to do that to this property, right? Like everything that you're saying. But if you really think that the first couple of years, you're not gonna get more than 50 or 75 cars on that lot at any time, I'm not saying that's how many cars you're gonna sell in a year, but it's what we're allowing you to have on that lot at any given time. Then that's what we're discussing right now, is, is that, right?
I understand, yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
So I, I wanna make sure we're.
My, my logic is the, the amount of cars supposed to be limited by the common sense and the size of the lot. No matter what you, you know, maybe I'm not gonna be a great manager, I won't have, you know, employees to help me with that, right? So at some point, you may have like 20 cars, you're not running efficiently business, right? And some level, you're not using the lot for, you know, on its full capability. So what I'm saying that I don't have the limit based on, you know, what I'm guessing right now that I can work with. I'm just trying to apply for the physical size of the lot that I wanna be paying for. That's, that's all.
So I don't think.
Wait, Jim, excuse me, Courtney, yeah.
So it sounds to me, Alex has proposed that a limit of, of 100 cars might be comfortable for him. We had a proposed amount for the previous license and because we're doing this all at once and in a larger context, we asked, we, we restricted slightly the number of cars that we allowed that gentleman to have, Mr. Swinney to have. It sounds to me like, like half the number that Alex has proposed would be punitive. But perhaps we could say a limit of 90 cars for the first four months rather than 100. With the understanding that we can, this is just so that we can navigate this process at the moment. In my mind, the number, I don't know the number of buses and, but it sounds to me, I'm, I got at least 20 vehicles on the back of the property, which is not your problem, but it's our problem. And so I'm trying to get the math at the end of the day to be lower than it is right now. Whatever the limit is right now, 134 is, I think, your area. I'd be happy if the whole place was, you know, under 135, let's say. So 90 and 12 and another 20 should be under 135. I'm just throwing out something to, 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 it could pinch everybody a little bit.
I'm gonna call on Mr. Presti, because do you wanna speak to total lots?
Jim's got his hand up, he's close.
I'm not at the point where I think the biggest issue is the number of cars.
Okay.
I was, and then Mr. Sevchenko opened the door again to the police interactions. So you described clearly more than one police interaction. Between 2017 and now, about how many times did the police come at the request of a customer?
The one that I deal with was just two customers, that's all.
About, about for the business as a whole?
So it was one customer, the, the second customer just did it twice. He wanna leave the car, we offered him to buy it back, completely refund it. They first agreed to do that, and we said, no problem, and they changed their mind. We said, okay, sign the, you know, just let us know you take it up by the lorry. They have to sign their decision. We have to offer, they have to sign. So we said, the car is here, they don't wanna sell it to us, no problem, sign it. He said, oh, no, no, I'm not gonna sign, I'm gonna call police.
So I didn't follow all that.
So that's basically two, two customers that I deal with.
Can I ask you a question?
Right.
So basically, they were saying that they didn't like the car you sold them?
Well, they first said, you know, they went to their body with the mechanic, that's how it usually happens, they pass inspection. So in terms of the law, like I said, we, we comply with the law, we don't have any small claim, we never lose, went to the court for any of those matters. But people have different perspective of the car. We tried to close the deal and let the customer go. If he's not happy with it, refund it.
So two people who you interacted with, how about for the business as a whole during that timeframe?
Uh, maybe a couple more, we have another old, another sales guy, a couple more.
What do you guys tell me?
Yes, I'd like to say it clear, but I have the reports here if you'd like to see them. So succinctly?
No, well, well, okay.
Succinctly, one, one customer came, bought a car in late December. Seven months later, he showed up with a list of items that were wrong with the car the day he bought it supposedly, except seven months had passed. They asked why he hadn't called them, he said, I couldn't find your number. Seven months later, they started shouting at each other and he called the police. It was non-event. The other one is what he said. Someone came back, wanted the car purchased back, they agreed to do it. There's a state form that you're supposed to sign in those circumstances, consumer law. There's a state form that you're supposed to sign in those circumstances, consumer law form. He asked the customer to sign it, the guy said, I will not sign it. It went back and forth, wouldn't sign it, called the police. He ended up giving, he ended up doing what the customer wanted without the form signed, just to make it go away.
Okay.
Here, if you'd like to see it.
Yeah, that's okay, thank you. Let me ask the chief a couple of questions. Is that about what you saw? I assume you've seen his records.
So I, I did a request just on the applicant, not on the business itself. And so I've only seen the one, um, where the guy brought the car back in. And I don't remember the seven months, but it was shortly thereafter, but then he went back in and brought the car out after. It was like behind in a, I believe in a, in a garage and then brought it back out or something. And that was the, uh, the report that I saw.
So last question, um, Infinite was at this location for about ten years. About how many times did the police have to show up for similar kinds of things?
For that particular business?
Yeah.
I'd only say a few times for that business at that location, for that, uh, complaint.
For Infinite Auto?
For Infinite Auto.
That kind of complaint?
For that kind of complaint.
So less than five?
Yes.
Okay, so comparable?
Yes.
Okay.
Chief, can I ask you a question? Sounds to me like you're very carefully answering three questions that we asked.
I answered his question, yes.
And not answering other, other questions.
I answered his question.
So my, my other question then is, did Infinite Auto have other complaints? That were not that type of a complaint?
I don't think it's. So I, I don't think it's fair to, to talk about Infinite Auto without them present or.
You're right, absolutely, as per our, our earlier.
So. So I, I think I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna respectfully.
See, we're all human.
I think what I want.
Caught in.
I'm, I'm gonna respectfully defer on that though.
So my, my point of, the reason for my question is just context. It sounds to me like this is a natural context of people disagreeing. Like we have people disagree with the town and sue the town, we might or might not be wrong, you know, but, and, and we can't avoid human disagreements. It sounds to me like this is a reasonable level of, of humanity in a, in a person who's doing business. But not every customer will always be satisfied.
I think there's a theme that I'm hearing about hesitation. I've heard it from you, Mr. Salvin, I've heard it from you, Ms. Birch Michael, and that is, we started this two weeks ago with a question about the application. We asked questions, we think we got some clarification. And during this entire engagement, I just have to say, boy, doesn't this feel different than the last class two that we just approved? It feels very different. And that's really meaningful, because when we talk about these class two licenses, man, it feels different, we're talking about police reports on this one, we're talking about whether the application was filled out correctly, we're talking about all, all sorts of, of questions, you know, we're, we're talking about a proposal of fifty or sixty cars or response. That wasn't a proposal, but it was like, I, I don't know where I'm at on this. You know, I, I walked in hoping to be convinced on this class two license, and I am becoming more convinced that the answer is no. Because as Ms. Birch Michael just, in a theme laid out, this is about building trust on that property to know that it's not going to happen, to do what happened last time. And it's about building up that trust, right? That's the same thing we did with the last license, it was about building up that trust of saying, start with this, things look good, come back, talk about your business, let's engage, and let's make sure that we're actually having this, this, this proper check-in. And I'm not hearing that, I'm hearing, well, the minimum business is this that I need to run, this is the rental, this is everything. And, and I know that that's, candidly, that's, it sucks. I mean, it's a bad business decision to sign a lease and then to not get the license that you need in order to do it, it really does. But I'm feeling more and more that, that we're not able to actually engage in a conversation about how we can build trust exercise, because that property is a very controversial property in town, it has a lot of energy behind it, a lot of anxiety, a lot of, of angers, you know, and, and I think that part of this is recognizing that, and we're trying, like, I, I hear you all trying to do that right thing of like, how do we build this? Maybe this isn't the way that we have, that we build it. And, and I'm becoming more convinced that maybe this transfer, this class two license is not how we're going to build trust on that property, such that we're actually moving our town in a direction where we can have a beautiful commercial district with great businesses next to residential, that everyone's trying to be as respectful as possible and, and, and hearing each other. Maybe this isn't that, that one. And, and I'm becoming more convinced that, that this may be the case. Because I, I'm hearing this, this lack of a willingness to understand that this is a transfer, this isn't a new application, this is a transfer of an application. This is why we're talking about the history of this current license and why there are issues on this current license, because it's a transfer of a license. If it was a new license, it would be a public hearing, we would do exactly what we did on the last one. We would be addressing the number of licenses, but this is a transfer, this is a very different thing. And I'm not hearing that there's a willingness, or maybe, frankly, I think maybe an economic need to actually be able to find where we can meet in the middle. I'm not hearing that there's a middle, I'm hearing that there is the economic and the only thing that I can do, and then I'm hearing where our board is, which is not there, I've heard it from multiple people saying, I'm not sure that we're all the way there where he is. And so, you know, my concern, you know, I'm a no vote. My concern is that if you all are a yes vote, that you find a way to do this in the right way that's going to balance the interests. And I think Ms. Birch Michael's commentary of how she was trying to approach it is, is the right way to go. And that's my, my only suggestion, but I'm coming from, from the no side on this, on this license. And so, you know, if there is no way to meet in the middle, I think we have to, you know, either seriously consider, you know, your proposal of, of where you're at to try to meet the economic needs, or the answer is that we can't get there. And, and the restrictions are, and please, um, Denise, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong here, we have discretion to set those restrictions as the board sees fit, we have complete discretion in that. And if we choose to set a, a set of guidelines that unfortunately make the economics not work on the other side, I think it's a consideration, but I think it's not the only consideration on the table, as I think the last two month of, of undertaking this exercise has been for all of us, trying to, to respond to community members, to understand, to hear everything, to, to really try to be in this position. So that's, that's what I'd like to raise as a concern, and that I think the right restrictions and the right approaches, the way Ms. Birch Michael is trying to approach it, I'm not sure if that's going to appease the applicant, but I think our responsibility here is not just to appease the applicant, it's to find that correct solution as a whole.
So I'd like to, I mean, my take on this is, the previous applicant had absolutely no business experience. So he's getting into a whole new business, it's a whole different ballgame, there's, it's apples to oranges, as far as I'm concerned. It's, it's a very small business, he's behind the building, it's, you know, and, you know, frankly, you know, he said all the right things, like, oh, I'm a green guy, I drive, you know, a, a green car. Well, that's actually irrelevant. So I think this is, this is us supporting a business in a location that's had a car dealership most of the eighty years, I mean, except for a few years when there was a preschool. You know, I want it to be a place that's not an eyesore. I think we can only hold him so much responsible for the previous license, you know, yes, it was a mess or there, and I am actually not even aware of if there was bigger concerns, but it's, you know, that was someone else. Yes, he's trying to transfer the license, but we're trying to get it to a better business. And there's a man who's got experience running a used car dealership. Now, I, I'm surprised there aren't more complaints, honestly, because it's, people get testy about used cars. So, you know, the fact there's only been a few, sounds pretty good to me, you know. People get concerned about a lot of things. So I do hope that we can find a number that works. I mean, we've got the whole issue with the larger property that we can't really, we're sort of, hands are tied on that, which is frustrating, but I think finding a number, he, he never said fifty, you were putting words in his mouth. He said, I might only sell fifty, he wasn't asking for fifty, so, um, I think you're not really being fair to him. I think you're having a, you know, make, well, I, I just, I would like you to, you know, be a little more patient with, with what he was saying, because I've heard him say, you know, I might only sell fifty, but I'm, you know, he doesn't know that for sure, but he needs the room, it's a much bigger property, he has a much bigger commitment to that, to this business. So, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to say, you know, I think, I don't know where Megan ended with eighty or, you know, maybe that was.
Can I give you some background on the numbers, how we arrived at the?
No, you know what, we need to have this discussion. I know you've got tons of information, but that could have been submitted to us and it had, I just.
It was submitted to you, I just don't think anybody's aware of it.
We, we have a lot of information, a hundred and thirty-four, a hundred and forty-three, we have a lot of information in front of us.
We have what, many, how many cars per row?
Yeah.
By the, you know, two calculations for.
We're trying. Our job is to try to, to find this, uh, uh, agreement that the, that the neighbors, I mean, the neighbors are in it, you know, they're not happy. We're trying to find a comfortable, uh, compromise on the numbers. Yeah, maybe, you know, if, if we squeezed in, we could get a hundred, what was the biggest number in here, a hundred and forty-three? I don't, we're not gonna approve a hundred and forty-three cars.
What is that, summer and winter?
Katie?
I know, I'm sorry.
Hi. Did you wanna say something?
You can go first.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, so really, again, where I'm landing on this is in four months, you're going to have to come back before us and ask for another license renewal. I feel like if we could get to a license that is a lower number right now, we see how this goes in four months, and if it is a train wreck, then we are well within our rights to to not approve your license again, quite frankly. And I think the hesitation that you're hearing on these numbers, I understand, I understand that you want as many cars as you can fit on that property, because you wanna sell them, and, and I, I do, I do.
Not that greedy, it's not.
No, 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 it's not, I'm not, I'm as, I, trust me, I, I'm in a small business, I understand you. However, um, I wanna make this something where we can meet in the middle, and that fact of the matter is, you still live next to a used car dealership, but to make it something that is, that is manageable for everyone around, right? And so I just, I, who, who live there and who work there, and, um, and so that's, that's where I'm coming down. If it's sixty cars outside, I don't remember how many it is inside. If we start with that, I just, I feel like I wanna offer a bargaining chip, yeah.
So if, may I piggyback on that?
Yeah, okay.
I think Ms. Birch Michael has the right approach.
Yes.
And I just wanna say that, um, I don't know why we're, based on what the applicant said, I don't know why we're talking about a number higher than sixty. I, I don't, you know, Mr. Burns didn't put that number in his mouth, not at all, I, I heard him say fifty. I heard him say fifty, I think he said would love fifty, uh, don't wanna be constrained if it happens to go higher than that, sixty. Again, as Ms. Birch Michael points out, we're only talking about six months here. He can always come in if things are going swimmingly, and he, he can always say, look, can we bump it up? By the same token, if things are going horrible, we can say no to renewal of the license or bring it down. I'm not particularly interested in how many cars the site holds. That's not gonna be the basis of my, of my decision, given the, the neighbors' complaints, the public safety concerns. I want a good ballpark for what the man thinks he needs for, for, uh, to do his business and, and be a viable business, and I heard, I heard sixty.
What I heard as well, so.
So I'd like to comment.
Yeah.
My understanding of retail inventory, having also run a shop, is that I might have twelve items in my store, and I see a great item, and I've just got, like, I know I'm gonna sell these. And so I wanna, I have to, okay, so I'll buy the minimum of those, and that's gonna be six. So now I have eighteen, and I sell two things, so, you know, what he's trying to avoid, I'm sorry, Alex, I'm just gonna call you Alex, is getting in trouble with us. Because he needs to be able to bring in new merchandise as the tastes change in cars, and he sees bargains that are gonna make him money, he needs to be able to bring in new merchandise. And if stuff is sitting, it's going to hamper him, and he might be stuck with vehicles that now are totally not what anybody wants. And he's not selling anything because he can't bring in what, you know, so he is asking for more than he might at, at any time actually transact, so that he doesn't get in trouble with us. He's asking for a buffer on purpose, and if we take that away from him, he's gonna automatically be in trouble, and we're gonna say, there's your license, see ya. And so that's just not fair, and I'm, I'm wound up now.
I do hear, I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I heard that too, and the buffer he asked for was ten, over fifty.
No, the buffer he asked for was a hundred, he asked for a hundred cars so that he could feel.
But then, what was the discussion about fifty and sixty that we all heard?
Well, we didn't all hear it the same, so.
Maybe, maybe our app can, can repeat.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you give me a word, yeah, I don't wanna interrupt you.
Well, no, because actually, as Mr. Burns pointed out, one of the problems here has been this sort of shifting information. What did you hear about fifty and sixty?
What I heard was that he thought that likely that would be, hopefully, what he would be transacting. But he couldn't be sure. And if it went to seventy or eighty, that would be great.
I think that's okay.
So that's what I heard, and so then, when he asked us if he could please have permission for a hundred, to me, that's completely reasonable, and I also would like to, no offense, make it pinch, because we've just pinched the other guy, and he's brand new, and he's, you know, and so I don't think everybody gets a hundred percent of what they're asking for in my, this conversation, because.
Would we be comfortable with eighty?
I would not.
Given that this has been saying, you know, a hundred and forty-three could fit there?
I would be a no on eighty.
I think I would be too, only given the fact that this license is going to be coming up for renewal. And quite frankly, if we double it at that point, because this business is doing well, I just, I, 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 trust me, I understand what you're saying about overstock inventory, and you wanna make sure you have it.
So, so if your bookstore is full and you need to buy more books, where do you put them? Do you take them home?
That would be no.
So, so if this man needs to buy cars for, to make his business work.
Well, that doesn't work, Courtney, because we just pile them on top of each other, so.
You can't sell fifty cars.
But I, you can't sell fifty.
You can't sell fifty cars if all you have is fifty cars.
Right, right.
You have to sell fifty out of, out of inventory of eighty or ninety, it's that simple.
Right.
And if he's gonna come back in four months and you don't like what's there, if you go by his shop right now, go look at the other operation he runs, it is total, it's nothing like Infinite, nothing like it.
Okay, yeah.
So you'll have a chance to take a second bite of this.
Why do you not let Mr. Presti speak all the time and ask her to be quiet? Excuse me? Because he's a property owner, and you know what, it's actually up to me as the chair to decide who's speaking.
Right, and like last time, we weren't allowed to speak about the property yet, you allowed him to go onwards about it.
And you, excuse me, ma'am? There's, you keep bringing up things that are not relevant to this license transfer, so that, we've heard it, and I, I'm trying to just keep this focused, I'm trying to get us done. We, we know you're, we're trying, I, I hope you can hear that we're trying to work through a compromise on the numbers, because we understand. But there are certain things we're gonna have to deal with, the bigger issue of the back property seems to be a much bigger issue than the front property. So, so can I, wow, okay.
So I, uh.
I, I just, I guess I'm feeling like, if we wanna support this business, we have to stop blaming him for Infinite, Infinite screwed up.
I'm not blaming for Infinite.
I think you are.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, that's, you're, you're trying to squeeze him.
All right, I'm gonna, hi, civility, everyone needs to just take a minute.
Excuse me, but I think I'm disagreeing, I don't.
You are yelling at each other, that is not a civil, okay, that is not civil, and I don't think that's what we're trying to do on this board, okay? I think everyone needs to take a beat, this is obviously a really hot moment, but screaming at each, over each other is also not gonna get us to where we need to be.
Then maybe everybody should take turns talking. I mean, I'm trying to control, I'm, there's a lot going on, and, yeah, I'm gonna get the look, but I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm gonna respectfully ask that you are respectful to me as well, okay? You're, you're not, at this moment, we're all wound up, I wanna move on from this, but we're, this is unacceptable in my, well, moment.
Can I be recognized?
I don't, I'm not.
Well, oh, sorry, yes.
What I'm, what I'm reacting to is what I heard, or think I heard. And I heard fifty or sixty. So then I was asked the question, will I go to eighty? And the answer is no. I could see going to seventy, seventy is ten more than sixty, this is not news to anyone. I could see going to seventy. Seventy is ten more than sixty. This is not news to anyone. But this seems to be twenty more than the fifty that I heard him say he'd be happy with. That's forty percent of, so if if he's happy with fifty, that's an increase of forty percent capacity. I am assuming, because I don't have the faith in humanity that you have, that whatever we approve, whatever limit we approve, the next day that number of cars are on the lot. And I think I have to assume that. So I'd go to seventy. Um, you know, I I want to go back to something Mr. Burns mentioned. I am getting, I have gotten a bad feeling through this whole thing. It has been difficult getting information, but I'm trying not to listen to that feeling. I am trying to listen to the objective information that I got. I got satisfied on the police interactions, finally, that when you try to compare apples with apples, it's comparable to the experience that Infinite Auto had. So I'm, I have finally moved on beyond that, and I'm ready to talk about numbers. I could see going to seventy. I don't, I just don't see, anytime we heard a number higher than sixty, it was linked to the capacity of the lot. Which I don't care about.
May I make a recommendation to try to move this along, since I'm going to be a no, and I think the number is set by you four, if I may make a recommendation? I think it's about just finding that minimum number that three of you agree on, because that seems to be where I I'm hearing, Ms. Richa, you suggest ninety would be sort of your lowest mark. I'm hearing Mr. Salvi say seventy. I I'm unsure where where you two are. I think that that's about finding wherever the, wherever three people are, if you all are voting yes to approve the license. And I think if if the comfortability is the minimum threshold here, then may I propose that we add this into a motion, and we provide an up or down vote with the other restrictions? If your answer is that's too low for you, I think you may still vote yes. If it's too high for you, you should vote no. I think that's what I'm hearing, but I I think just, we should bring this to a close, because I know there's significant other business to attend to.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion?
Sure.
I move that the select board approve the transfer of a Class Two license for ninety-two Great Road units one and three from Infinite Automotive to Carlot Express Incorporated with the following stipulations and conditions. Number of cars inside the showroom, five. Inside the garage, five. Number of cars outside on the lot, sixty. Days and hours of operation as in the application. No further stipulations on on the license at this time. This license is valid through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and subject to annual renewal of.
Two minor additions that we have the same public safety review of the
Absolutely.
the layout and the the delivery hours to meet the hours of operation. Only during hours of operation and not on Sunday.
Yep. I think that is a friendly amendment.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to last say what you said.
The the delivery.
Over again?
Yeah, why'd you do the, yeah, should we do that again? Thank you.
So I move that the select board approve the transfer of a Class Two license for ninety-two Great Road units one and three from Infinite Automotive to Carlot Express Incorporated with the following stipulations and conditions. Number of cars inside the showroom, five. Inside the garage, five. Number of cars outside on the lot, sixty. Days and hours of operations as sales nine a.m. to eight p.m. Monday through Saturday by appointment Sunday. Mechanical, eight a.m. to eight p.m. Monday through Saturday. Further stipulations are that the layout of um car spaces on the outside lot be reviewed by public safety and approved, and deliveries will only be during business hours.
Second.
This license is valid through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and subject to annual renewal.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 No, is four to one, uh, the motion passes, so you have a Class Two license. And we'll see you back in later. Yeah.
I can still, a couple of comments. Uh, you said you're not feeling comfortable?
Well, at this point, it it's done. And we'll, you know, Denise will have it ready for us to sign at our next meeting, and.
I'm just questions about like, uh, on the first, uh, that if I have sixty-one cars, what's going to happen?
You'd be in violation of your license.
It was just, uh.
My file will completely shut you down.
You probably will, yeah.
Don't do that.
I was just like, a quick question, just, uh, you've been okay with a hundred cars for ten years with the same property?
But I think what.
And now you're saying that it's not, you know, it's not comfortable, you don't feel comfortable. What has that changed? Just, this is nothing's going to like influence, right? Because you made a decision, just like, you know, my, like, out of curiosity. The lot didn't change, the operation changed, and you've been like, okay, for a hundred cars, and now you're cutting it to sixty because of what I was saying, that I'd be okay to see that fifty, sixty cars is actively, like, you know, in in sale and stuff. I'm not saying that that's the maximum that I can reach right now, that that's all my comment, that's it.
Ms. Richa is going to respond briefly.
I I made this motion because I wanted to get this to work tonight, so that you could have a license.
I appreciate your time, buddy.
And I I would have, I would have offered you a hundred cars, but I do, my compatriots wouldn't vote for that. And so what I I hope can happen is, I hope this will work for you enough so that we can see you in a few months, and perhaps we can negotiate a higher number.
Okay.
And I I apologize that I argued a higher number tonight.
Appreciate everybody's comment, yeah.
Okay, it's not, it's not personal. It's because of the history, so we have a new board.
No, I just like, logically, for ten years, it wasn't, you you had no concern?
Yeah, we really, I'm sorry, we really need to move on. Okay, we've we've taken the vote. You have a license.
I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So next item on the agenda, Mr. Coppola, Marco Coppola, is he on the apologies for your, um, the later hour?
Good night.
Thank you. So the proposal for Mr. Coppola is to to put his utility lines underground. I guess, why don't we start, if you want to present, oh, I guess first I want to just check, is someone from Hudson Light and Power on the call?
I don't think so.
No, okay. Um, yeah, right, right, okay. Um, so, Mr. Coppola, you want to just give us a brief summary? We we obviously have your application in front of us.
Yeah, so just, thank you for having me. Um, so I have an ongoing, um, renovation project going on, um, in part of the project, um, going to be relocating the electrical meter, um, over to the, um, garage side of of the vision. Um, so in initial, my initial meeting and conversation with Hudson Light and Power, we discussed often whether, you know, bringing it back over ahead or going underground. Um, and at that time, you know, just based on conversation, um, in keeping aesthetics and also safety and everything in mind, I wanted to see if I could actually bury all of the utility lines a hundred percent underground as part of that project. Um, in in doing so, obviously, I'll need to cross Hudson Road, which obviously is a main road. Um, so wanted to, you know, see at the time approval, to see if I could actually do that, coordinating with all, um, the other parties that would be involved in doing it.
So, um, I I I can ask other people to start. My biggest question, I guess, is, I mean, I I've always loved the idea of everything being underground because wires are ugly, but when it's one house, you're still going to lose power if, you know, people on Hudson Road lose power, right? So it's not going to benefit from, it it's really an aesthetic thing more than a utility thing, right? Because I I guess I'm concerned that that, uh, that the ownership thing is going to be very complicated, and then you still won't have that much better service than the rest of us.
Uh, so, uh, both, um, from, uh, uh, weather standpoint, um, it would be a great benefit to have, uh, utility line underground. Um, my neighbors across the road have live pine trees, so they tend to break, um, you know, in weather, especially in the winter. Um, the power line, you know, you can hit by, um, a branch, and yeah, of course, lose the power. Um, the benefit would be, I I would eliminate that risk a hundred percent. I also have a lot of new trees that I planted in front of the property, uh, that's smaller currently, but, you know, as time goes by, um, they're going to grow, obviously, and um, also propose, you know, that risk, they cannot pine trees, they're Cleveland tree, so they're stronger. That that was actually, uh, factored into, um, the selection of trees, but just overall, I absolutely will, you know, reduce the risk of power outage. Uh, will I eliminate it a hundred percent? No, I won't, um, but I will do separately, I think.
Oh, I was scratching, but I do have a question.
And I'm just going to put up for those, the the map here, just so that folks know what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Sir, one reason that people sometimes sink overhead electrical lines is because they're going to have big trucks, uh, turning in and out of a business. Are you, do you have a commercial operation there, or do you anticipate having one?
No, no, this is strictly private.
Okay.
Yeah.
Health and safety is one of the most important considerations I have for this, and our superintendent of streets email that was included in the packet, I think, really addresses to me the core concern of of this, which is that, you know, if somebody else digs, you're liable, you're responsible for these wires underground. It's a little concerning when, and and potentially for me, this may be why I need a Hudson Light and Power person on just to sort of help walk me through, but it's concerning to me that if we were to, you know, have road issues or have any type of digging issues, with this not being properly publicly marked, really to prevent any any injury, you know, health and safety of our workers are are top concern to me, and and that and that worries me, uh, that that we would be placing this underground without really proper utility supervision and and maintenance and and concern. Um, I was wondering, I obviously saw you had a safety section in your application, you know, was just hoping that you could walk me through from your view, at least, what, you know, if you've, if you've sort of read that response from our superintendent of streets, and and if you had a response to sort of engage with with that, because that's my, that's my top concern. I think beyond that, I I don't quite frankly have any issue, but I, this this really concerns me.
Um, I actually didn't have an opportunity to see, um, a, the, um, you're talking about from from the highway department?
Yeah, so in in our agenda packet, uh, there's, uh, information, and it may be helpful for you to to sort of pull that up and 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 take a look, but yes, um, if you don't mind me, Madam Chair, may I, can I just read the email, just so that way you have the information in front of you? It says, "Our only concern is HLP will not own this. The homeowner will. The homeowner will need to plan so that if anyone else pulls permits to be digging in the road, DigSafe, that his utility gets marked out. We don't want the liability if his service does not get marked out, and it is hit when someone is digging in the road." If it has not been marked out, and there are, if it has not been marked out, that there are no liability on our part. Sorry for the typo.
You took it fast.
Uh, so that's what the superintendent of streets said to us, uh, and, you know, it it's, it was the concern that I had in in this project after reading that, and in the health and safety view, and so, um, you know, I, maybe this is to the board, you know, just that that was my my top concern. Otherwise, I, you know, I've really just had a question for you, Denise, which is, how do we evaluate, like, what's the standard that we have to use here? Is this complete discretion? Is this, you know, that's what I assumed it was, just wanted to make sure. But that's, that was my question.
May I ask a question for the town administrator, um, on Mr. Burns's concern, which is also mine. So I used to think that DigSafe came out with ground penetrating radar and and detected all the lines, and it turns out that they don't. They go to some central location where plans are located, and if you haven't filed a plan, they don't know your line is there, but if you have, they do. Could we condition our approval on not only the detail, but the homeowner working with Steve, who could guide him through whatever process there is for making sure DigSafe will know about this? Would that be fair?
So, yes, and actually, well, I I shouldn't say yes. So Steve is on the Zoom. Um, I would defer to him if he would be the right entity to work with the applicant in this matter.
Steve, do you, um, have a thought on this?
I'm here, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, I think we can work with Derek. There's got to be a way. I know that, um, towns that have water sewer drain, they can either opt in with DigSafe or opt out, so there's got to be some way that we can try and help the homeowner to opt in and opt out. Uh, Derek might know that better over HLP, and, uh, we tried to get in touch with him before this meeting, and, uh, we're unsuccessful. So we can try to figure something out, get him so he's into that program. He might have to pay a fee. I don't know all of the details. I just know that it's a requirement under state law, that anybody that does work on any piece of property, doesn't matter if it's in the town, street, or your own private property, you have to notify DigSafe that all the utility companies come out and market.
And my other concern, which, and I'm sorry that Hudson Light isn't on the call, is, I I, again, it's sort of getting an understanding of how this all works, because what I worry about is if something happens on the related line, and and this line underground has to be accessed, who's responsible? Like, you know, are, is the, is Hudson Light and Power going to take on that responsibility? Is the homeowner? I just want to make sure we're clear on sort of ownership and liability issues on this whole small section. Yeah, Denise.
So I think according to, um, HLP's response, they will not own the wire. So once they run the wire there, it will be the responsibility of the homeowner for the conduit and any, and I would assume, um, that if he does plan to run Verizon Comcast, the same would be true for them, that once it's in a conduit that he's putting in, it's his responsibility should something happen to it.
So I could speak slightly to this, um, having just had DigSafe on a project. But I, um, if if Hudson Light and Power is going to install his line, and then he's going to own it, it would, it would want to be marked on a as-built plan that is going to be part of the record with perhaps, um, the building department, so we would have it on file. Lines, you know, other kinds of lines have a tracer put on it so that it's detectable. Just had that done on a project. Um, and, um, if I were the homeowner, I mean, I do have a buried line for, on my property, and, uh, I'm pretty sure it's my responsibility, period. So from that pole where it goes underground, it's all me. Um, and it, in my case, it's off the road. But if I were this homeowner, I would perhaps want to be extra careful and just be on top of it, make sure it's, you know, something that a future owner of the property would know, and, um, perhaps even, um, you know, get an engineer to to certify that part of the plan, that the line is there, so that it's just kind of official and tight.
And did I read it right? It goes through the right-of-way, was that on Steve's comments about the right-of-way? I was thinking, I read that somewhere, no, I can't, I wrote it down, and now I can't.
I think I made, I indicated that on on the letter.
Oh, okay.
The right-of-way, you know, obviously, we would be, obviously, we would be perfect highway department, police department, police. police department, police detail for road closure. In my conversation with Hudson Light and Power, it was with Derek, when he come out to the property, as I said initially, we've been out there a couple of times. My understanding is that as the homeowner, you know, the electrician performed in the work when they did the cutover, because it's true, he actually moved the line from the house all the way through the pole and then up to, you know, whatever distance up the pole, they instructed us to run conduit. That pipe coming out of the ground turned one up, that pipe, you know, so many feet out of the road, that pipe, 10 feet, 15 feet. Yes, we would order to wherever they then come in, maybe that next one over.
Are you a contractor or something?
Well, I do have a home exhibit, but the point I was going to make was that I had a survey company come out and they drove a rod through my electrical service in the ground. It was a direct burial. My concern is, is my thought I want to share with you is that they called DigSafe. DigSafe comes out and he marks the lines. But they don't mark the power lines if it's on your property. They only, what you have, what you have to do is you have to call DigSafe, you have to call Hudson Light and Power directly. And you have to sign a release to allow that, for them to come out and do the job. So that's, you know, the calling DigSafe is good, but Hudson Light, people don't know this. Because we called DigSafe, the contractor called DigSafe.
Right.
Didn't have a clue and next thing you know.
It's the utility.
It's the utility.
But in this case, because it's on his property, it would just be.
He would be responsible to do that. But if it's in the road, they'd have to mark that as well. Like an, like an Adam is driving my house, Hudson Light and Power has a green box across the street. And they service another green box that goes across under the road to my service. Then from there, it comes up to the house. So they can get Hudson Light and Power to put, I'm going to use the green box so it stays, so it's not overhead. If they get Hudson Light and Power to do that, then he'd only be responsible from that green box on his side of the street up to his house. But.
But that's not what's happening.
No, no, no.
No.
I understand, I just.
That helps me actually just a little.
Okay, just trying to.
Thank you. Yeah, Jim.
May I ask?
Yes.
Mr. Coppola, I just want to, if you asked Hudson Light and Power to do this for you, they'd do it at their expense, right? But they would probably do an overhead line?
If, so if I was going to go overhead, then yeah, they would move the line overhead. That's a part of the concern is where the dealer points, we are coming across a window. So the conduit would be, you know, X number of feet from that window. So that was also a concern is why the power and power station. With multiple stack, stack, statically in front, coming, not directly across the window where, you know, it'll still meet code. But yeah, ultimately, they would be doing that work. They would relocate the actual owner.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions and maybe the chief can speak to what, you had mentioned something about detail officers needing to be available. And so that would be fixed buttons at the homeowners.
Yeah, so whoever would hire, if it was a homeowner or a contractor, whoever would, who's doing the work. But in that location where you're right on the curb, you're going to need to, especially you have that added addition Edson Street coming out right at your house. And so you're going to have that traffic coming northbound and then southbound and then around the corner. And, you know, I don't, we'd have to look at the plans too, because how would we do it? We're going to dig up the whole trench at one time and do half the work at once or half the road? I mean, we'd have to really talk with the contractor, whoever's going to be doing that work and find out what's, what the plan is and come up with a plan. We could easily do that.
Byron, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
In the interest of moving things along, like we did on the last thing, I think it's time to make a motion, just see if it has three votes. It probably does.
I have, there's one person on Zoom that Bill wanted to say something. Is that okay?
Of course.
Bill, Byron?
Yes. Good evening, Marco. I just have a couple of comments. I'm not sure if this section of Hudson Road has just been newly paved or an area that's not been newly paved.
It has not. Not yet.
It's not, okay. So generally, my observation is that when they do an underground, they bring it to the property area overhead. And then the underground is strictly on the owner's land, which would mean installing a pole on Mr. Coppola's property and carrying it across overhead. The reason I asked about the new pavement is 64 years of experience tells me that quite often we get a road paved and suddenly somebody wants to dig it up. And I will tell you that the trench that's made across that road will never heal. It'll always eventually sink. And you'll have a constant bump there. If you want proof of that, you go over to Martin Road and you will see two trenches that were made to facilitate, facilities for a project. And they had just paved that, which they seldom do. And immediately afterward, they cut a trench, two trenches in both of them. The town just recently threw some pavement in on it to fill it in, but it'll never heal. It'll never be the same.
Thanks, Bill. Mr. Monthy Aegis.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before you make the motion, can I ask a question about one of the statements on the motion? Because I just want to confirm. And that is Denise, you had listed on the motion owner to arrange for his utility to be marked by DigSafe.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you.
The last line of your motion where you have owner to arrange for his utility to be marked by DigSafe for future digs to avoid any liability for the town. Just wanted to confirm if it's listed on DigSafe, the town then is like, from the liability stance of the town, we're then in the clear, provided we can ensure that his underground utility line is marked in DigSafe, then from a liability stance, are, like, we've absolved ourselves from that duty?
No, technically, we absolve, we absolve ourselves the minute he pays to put a conduit under the ground that he would own. That was put in there based on Steve's comments that we put that in the motion, if that's how you wanted to include it, to arrange for his listing that with DigSafe.
When they built the elementary school, they hit at the gas line. That DigSafe didn't have identified.
They run into Flower Village too. They run into something with Flower Village.
Yes, well, now and now, DigSafe is not.
Having looked at the conditions that Denise and Joyce or whoever put together.
Phoebe, it's all Phoebe.
Phoebe. I don't know how we could be more thorough.
That's right.
I am going to add a predicate. Madam Chair, having received no objection from Hudson Light and Power, I move to grant permission for existing overhead utility lines at 230 Hudson Road to be buried underground under Hudson Road and attached to an existing pole on the other side of the street with the following stipulations. Work to be coordinated with DigSafe, Hudson Light and Power, and Stowe Highway and Police Departments. Trench to be approximately two feet wide and three feet deep. Work to be completed to code and subject to inspection. Roadway to be restored to finish by repaving two inches of binder and two inches of roadway top. Costs for the work are to be paid by applicant Marco Coppola of 230 Hudson Road. Work is expected to be completed in August. Owner to arrange for his utility to be marked by DigSafe for future digs to avoid any liability for the town. Second?
All in favor? Yeah.
Right.
Unanimous.
Mr. Coppola, you want a copy of all that? I need it.
Yeah, no, I, I, I am fortunate, you got him actually scheduled in the work. So in doing, you know, keeping in mind the size of the studio, I have the contract already lined up for Wednesday, August 18th. And I have a rain date for the backup date for Thursday, the 19th. Who do I, I get contact for up to ask to move forward?
So you need to contact everybody. Hudson Light and Power, the highway department, the police department, and DigSafe to make sure they are all available for those dates. The police, the police may be a little difficult on short notice getting details scheduled, so you might want to call them first.
You can give Lieutenant Train a call. He would be more happy to help you with any scheduling needs you have.
Lieutenant Darren Train.
Okay, on to Wildlife Woods. Actually, you know, I don't know who's on the call, but I was thinking since Abby has been sitting here that maybe we take Abby, so she can.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
If that's, I honestly don't know. Are those all the people on the call still?
Well, Anthony is from Wildlife Woods.
Oh, he's from Wildlife Woods.
That's okay. How do you like?
All right. Are you okay?
I'm good.
All right.
Thanks.
So Wildlife Woods Homeowners Association Trust, modification of your care and maintenance of Wildlife Woods Open Space Area Agreement. So we have, we have the proposed revision. I'm sorry, oh, there he is. Hi, hi, I'm sorry, I can't see your name because it's really small. But please introduce yourself and tell us a little, what's, just give us the summary. We have it in front of us, obviously.
Good evening, my name is Anthony Paranillo. I am joined here with one of my fellow trustees, Sandy McKinney. I reside at 52 Whispering Way. Sandy resides at 29 Woodland Way. We're both trustees of the Wildlife Woods HOA Trust. And we are here this evening to request modification to the existing agreement between the HOA Trust and the town with regards to the maintenance of the open space that was signed, I believe, back in 2011. Because as we've grown as a trust and the property, obviously, you know, 10 years or when this first came up two summers ago, just needs additional maintenance, we're finding that the existing agreement isn't really suitable for the scope of work that needs to get performed. So we're here before you to discuss our request, give you some, our thoughts. And hopefully we can arrive at either language that we proposed or some modification to that so that it works and we can all accomplish our goals.
Thank you. Denise, do you have something to add on this at this point? No.
Well, I would just say, the only thing I would comment on, based on the proposed revision, is whatever the board chooses, one of the items in this agreement should be that it still needs to meet all permits and regulations of the town. So I would just make sure that that is added if the board chooses to move forward with this revised agreement.
Can I give a little history and express a concern?
Yeah.
Hi, Anthony, how are you?
Mr. Salvi, good evening.
So I don't know why we're in this business. Most subdivisions, the common areas are held by the homeowners association. And I think that the Wildlife Woods homeowners association held this, held these common areas for a while. And then in 2011, my memory is, for some reason, that wasn't possible anymore. They didn't, they no longer wanted to hold it. They wanted to transfer to a town. And if typically common areas, if they're not held by the homeowners association and may, correct me if I'm wrong, they're either held by the town or a nonprofit and they're kept with some sort of restriction on them. At the time, there was a big dispute between the selectmen and the conservation commission. Doesn't matter why. So they didn't want the conservation commission involved at all in this. I opposed this because who are we going to have to go out there and enforce it? Are we going to send our administrative assistant? You know, the ConCom is in the business of maintenance. And I thought it was heading toward, you know, we'd be, we'd have problems coming to us and we couldn't handle it. In defense of everyone who was in favor of it, I think there have been problems maybe two times in the past 10 years. Once, two years ago, something about pruning, some dispute about pruning. And Anthony talked to me about it. I would actually suggest, there's obviously nothing, there's no emergency about this. I'd prefer to table this. This is just my suggestion. I prefer to table this and figure out, why can't we just send it back to the homeowners association? Then they can do whatever they want to do. I kind of don't like the language here because it's taking stuff that's very specific and making it more vague. The whole thing about forestry standards, what does this mean? Does this mean we have to send the tree warden down there periodically? Or does this mean if a homeowner says, well, those aren't forestry standards, we're going to have somehow adjudicate, Bruce Fletcher is going to adjudicate this? I don't know. This is, if there's no emergency, no tree pruning emergency, I'd prefer, I'd suggest we table this and figure out why are we even in this business?
Can I, Mr. Salvi, can I make a comment?
Of course.
My recollection of why we are in this business is because I think the HOA, not the HOA, but maybe the neighborhood, maybe, I think your point, Jim, we didn't vote to take the land back when it was, I think when, you know, I may not have the right vernacular, but I think when the subdivision was completed, I believe the builder had the opportunity, or we had the opportunity to take the land back. And I don't think we voted that way at town meeting, or we didn't vote, or, you know, we just were asleep at the switch. You know, not necessarily the trust, but I don't remember exactly those details. You know, to your point, we don't want to get in the business of like, you know, getting into, you know, neighbors. All we want to do, you know, we maintain the land and we do it, you know, in a very responsible way. The language I put in there about, you know, sound, whatever it was, sound forestry management practices was some language that Bruce had suggested, Mr. Fletcher, back when Sandy and I met him two summers ago when we had this issue of pruning the trees. So that was just some language I put in to, you know, just make it, you know, reasonable. We're not looking to change the world. We want to keep the general character, it's that it's getting overgrown. Some of these branches encroach over like the sidewalks and then it doesn't like thaw. In the wintertime, it creates, it's icy. Some of these branches are overgrowing in common areas and like the grass isn't growing. So it's becoming, you know, just cosmetically unappealing, right? So it's, so.
But Anthony.
We're not looking to cut down a bunch of trees. We just want to like maintain that area and keep it tidy. That's really it.
But Anthony, do you, do you see my overall point, which is?
Oh, totally.
Why don't you?
I absolutely do.
Why don't you just have custody, like every other homeowners association in the world? Why do you even have to come to us with this stuff?
Yeah, listen, you know, arguably, you're preaching to the choir here. I don't remember that, you know, again, the exact genesis of that document being signed in '11. I don't remember that. But, you know, we've been good stewards. And so the proposed language was just trying to continue and allow us to be good stewards of the land.
But you have had occasional disputes with some homeowners. I remember you coming and talking to me.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, it was like, it was crazy and I, I was, you know. Yeah, we just, we started pruning some trees and people were up in arms. And it's like, look, you got to prune the trees.
And why would the town want to do that?
So my question, can we just, just void the agreement and say that we're, or say we're turning the whole property? Is there a reason not to do that now? Or do you think we need to do more research before we just turn it over to the homeowners association?
Well, it's an agreement, so I don't think one side can just void it. They would have to agree.
Right, but we could start that process. Or, but are you saying that, I mean, I thought you were, you wanted to postpone, so I just was, I wanted to be clear.
Yeah, the planning board.
I could respectfully interject. I mean, it's not like, you know, the sky is falling.
Yeah.
Right.
We would like to at least bring in a contractor soon. You know, what does that mean? In the next month, 60 days to try to start some of the tree work.
Yeah.
Because it's going to take a while to do it. We're not going to get the whole neighborhood done like this fall. So, you know, we're all ears to your, to whatever you guys propose. Just that sometimes when they get postponed or tabled, it can take like a long time. And we're just looking to take some action. Now you'd say, well, Anthony, or Jim would say, well, Anthony, you came up to my house two years ago, why now?
He wasn't going to bring that up.
Kind of getting around to it.
Right.
And I was just turned off by all our neighbors' reactions to us trying to do the right thing. And, you know, it's like thankless job like yours is unfortunately. And.
Okay, let me, I'm going to, the board has some things to say. You want to say, Megan first? Okay, Megan first.
All I would like to say is, I would like to see the order of conditions for the planning board document and ConCom. Because I think that that's going to answer a lot of questions, right? It's like, if we see the order of conditions, then we can say. right? It's like, if we see the order of conditions, then we can say whether or not the select board should have any say in it. Because quite frankly, I don't, I mean, I haven't seen it, but I can't imagine that we would. Like, that it would, that it would be the homeowners association. So I, I kind of agree with tabling it if there's not a, but I don't know.
I think the order of conditions, we might be using different words, but that agreement that I marked up, that is the original agreement, if you will. I don't think there's any other supporting documentation.
Well, it would have been from the original development. That's, the order of conditions from the original.
Oh, 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 I see. Yes.
So have another, another angle. Perhaps we can approve this language and still look into how we can amend or change the agreement in the future. But if we were to approve this language, then folks could get out there and do the work in the season when landscapers prune trees. I think that the terminology about sound forestry management practices is spot on. So I would.
Except when there's a dispute.
I would propose that we approve the, sorry?
Except when there's a dispute. I understand what you're saying, but.
It's a term that Mr. Perkins would use, who's part of the forestry group.
It's just that we don't want to be in the middle of people arguing, that's sound management.
I agree.
That's not sound. May I make a suggestion, I think is what you're trying to say? Not so much approving the language of the agreement, but giving the homeowners association permission to proceed with the immediate pruning needs in accordance with sound forestry manager practices. And tabling any changes to the language of the agreement so we can look into it. I think that's what Ms. Frashia is suggesting.
I would accept that as a compromise.
We would have to recognize that current agreement does not allow any pruning, for whatever reason. And there are apparently some homeowners who don't want any pruning. So we will be.
So we don't want to get in the middle of that.
Hence, I mean, Anthony didn't show up at my house two years ago for no reason at all.
Yeah, it was, you know, we sent out an email to the, to the folks, to all the neighbors, hey, we're doing this work, you know, a month before. I think we did a week before. And then obviously, everyone, of course, the day of is up in arms.
Let me put this.
And it was just a distasteful experience.
Anthony, have you notified all the homeowners, all the residents, that you're gonna be doing this pruning work?
For this next round of work?
Yes.
We have not, because I didn't want to do, so according to two things, Jim. First, the answer is no, because we haven't scheduled it, because we don't have the right, I don't want to have a, you know, a repeat of what happened last time. And as trustees, in our agreement, in our, whatever you call it here, I have it here, in our like agreement with the, as trustees, hey, we have the right as elected officials to, you know, we have a certain scope of responsibility and to care for the land and maintain the land. So, and so that's what we just want to do without really any other interference. And just for the record, when that whole thing happened, and again, just for everyone else's benefit, we had this work done two summers ago and these emails started flying and people just got so nasty. It was just gross.
I know. Anthony, I think, Anthony.
Everyone hides behind their laptops and throws, you know, grenades, but no one's willing to come out and speak publicly. So.
So.
You know, how did you?
Should also be pointing out that there was a small vocal minority that actually caused problems. There was, you know, I don't know, there was equally if not more people actually, you know, thanking us and indicating that this was something that was long overdue and needed. So, you know, I do want to make, don't want to make it sound as if, you know, the entire, you know, community is against what we're trying to do. I don't think that's correct whatsoever.
Okay, so.
I think a lot of people also were confused, but the wording indicating they thought we, the town was responsible for doing all this. And so there was some confusion during those initial discussions, thinking that we had no right to be doing it, whereas it's very clear in the document that, you know, somebody has to be doing this, this type of work.
Okay, I think, I think, we're, we're ready to come up with the immediate need. Jim, why don't you make a motion and then?
I'm sure everyone can recognize why we don't want to get in the middle of this.
Right.
So I'm simply going to move that we table this matter and expeditiously review why the town and/or the board of selectmen has to be involved in this and I'll put an eye toward making modifications.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, do we want to give them the temporary ability to do the pruning that they need to do this fall?
I would not, considering they haven't notified all the homeowners.
Okay.
So.
But, Jim, in deference to us, we don't have to notify them yet because we haven't scheduled the works.
Right, okay.
You don't be prudent to first get your permission. And then, once we have that permission, we would then schedule the work. Otherwise, we're in the same boat and, in a sense, you know, run the same risks as last time. That's why, that's why we proceeded in this format.
Right, okay. So we will, we will do our due diligence on our side and then let you know as soon as we can come up with another vote.
Okay, so no action required.
No action.
On our part until we hear from you guys relative to getting, you guys will put this back on the agenda or let us know when you'd like to put it back on the agenda and we can proceed from there. Is that right?
Correct.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience and tonight. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna take Abby because even though we have a number of these events, but since Abby is physically here, we're gonna let her go home. All My Relations Community Art Show, hosted by Nazja. So we have the information. Why don't you give us the update? Because I think there were still some things pending, right?
Yeah, I mean, I just spoke to the chief out in the hall and he's good with everything. We have a traffic plan, we have signs that we're gonna put up. I think that's in, on the map that I sent you folks. I did get permission from the church, the Tabernacle Church, to use the parking lot. The only thing that I'm waiting on is liability issues if someone trips. So we had talked about this. The Board of Health did, like, they said that in terms of serving food and stuff, that we were fine and I didn't need to have another permit because we have one ice cream truck that's coming. And they're already permitted and they're all set. Bolton Bean is not coming, they can't make it unfortunately. So we're just not gonna have other food. There's just gonna be an ice cream truck. So beyond that, it's really the, I haven't heard back about liability issues from the Board of Health or who else I need to talk to on that, I suppose. But everything else, I think I have followed up with that's on there.
So, so the event part is on Saturday and then the art will still be up on Sunday, but your ice cream truck and stuff, that's on?
Yes, that will be from about like ten to one on Saturday. Yep.
Did you talk to the fire department about their touch of truck event being at the same time?
Yes, so Anna Celestria Cars, my co-organizer, and she's married to Yuri. And so that they, we very much tried to have that happen at the same time and it just didn't happen. So, yeah.
So people can go from one to the other.
Exactly, we're gonna promote each other.
Big day, right, right. Any questions from other people about their event?
Sounds like a neat event.
Sounds like fun.
You're all excited for the art.
Please come.
And the art will be up basically through the days. Oh, and did you talk to the chief about the security of the art?
Yeah, yeah, he said that they'll swing by a few times and just check on everything. We did write in our application process that the artists themselves know that we are not responsible for any lost or stolen or damaged items. And I reiterated that when I sent out emails of acceptance just two days ago, yesterday, yesterday. So we have about, I think it's like twenty-two pieces of art that we hope to put on display, from, mostly from this area, mostly Stowe residents, some Hudson, there's one artist from West Brocksbury. So, yeah.
Great.
Cool.
So if there's no other questions, I'll take motion.
Madam Chair, with the approval of public safety officials, I move to approve a permit for All My Relations Community Art Show, hosted by the Neshova Area Social Justice Alliance, to be held at Town Center Park on August twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yay, great.
Thanks.
Thank you for.
Thanks for sticking through, but it's all right.
I know.
You're not, this is.
I was learning. But I am gonna go home now.
Let him use it.
Yeah, right. No, I don't care.
Recording stopped.
You know, I might want that.
Time to soak up.
Zoom just, yeah.
Recording in progress.
Nope, there we go. Okay, Water Carnival, Labor Day weekend, Lake Boone Association. We, we had a lot of, David's there. Oh, hi, David.
Yeah, hello.
Hi. Thanks for your patience and.
I, I can't believe you guys have to go through this every two weeks.
It's been busy. So, so this is the greatest, one of the most fun events of Stowe every year, I think, the Lake Boone Celebration. It looks pretty much like what you usually do, correct?
That's right. And this is the one hundredth year anniversary of the Lake Boone Association. So.
Wow.
We're adding in the Kala Sauran, which I think was at one of the spring fests a few years back. It's a, like a kaliopin, but it's a, it's an air organ and it really adds to the crust of that spirit, so.
Great. I'm just gonna go straight to, any questions here? I mean, I think David included a lot of information in the packet. We all good?
I'm good.
Yeah, it looks great. Thank you for, thank you for organizing again. All of you and your hard work.
The town people who are invited will get the PR and the independent side.
Great.
Yeah, so I won't make it.
All right, thanks, Jim.
Madam Chair, with the approval of public safety officials and pending approval from the Board of Health, I move to approve a permit for Lake Boone Association Water Carnival to be held at Lake Boone weekend of September third through the sixth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Great. Thank you, David. Thank you, Karen. So.
Thank you, I know.
Great. Okay, the MS, Bike MS Ride the Vineyard Mainland, I'm confused by the name, but, and she's here too. Do we have names?
Yeah.
Yes.
David Rivera.
Oh, hi.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good. I know we're, it's late, but I still want to, just a minute on like, what's the, the mission of the bike ride?
Um, so this, so to expand on the name, typically we have a ride on Martha's Vineyard every year. It would, it'll be our thirtieth year next year. However, due to COVID, we were kind of pushed off the island this year. It typically takes place in April or May. Historically, we have held Bike MS Minuteman, which some of you might be familiar with, which we held for almost a decade. Our last ride was in two thousand and seventeen, so we used to ride through Stowe in July. So this year, our hope was to kind of resurrect those beautiful roots of Minuteman to still hold a micro event to raise funds for the National MS Society. So our goal this year is to raise about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We're at a hundred and about forty-four thousand dollars to that goal at this present time. So we're kind of combining an old ride with a continuous ride to just make sure that we are raising awareness for MS along with money for national research, advocacy and services for those living with MS, especially for the forty-one thousand individuals that are living in this area. So we, I have spoken extensively with the chief of police and we've already created a reroute from where we originally. We're expecting just to be mindful of the honeypot orchard season, since we are asking for September eighteenth. It is a one-day ride. As of the third of August, we had about a hundred and ninety cyclists registered. To be transparent, we do have a twenty-five mile route that does not come anywhere near Stowe, so some of those cyclists will only be on the twenty-five mile route. So I think when I sent the letter to the town, it was with the thought of we had a total maybe three hundred, three hundred and fifty for our entire event. We're looking probably to ride maybe one eighty-five through Stowe. We will not be stopping. We're only here for a four-mile stretch. And I believe, timing wise, I did a math, it's, our first cyclist should arrive about nine-thirty into Stowe and the last one should arrive into Stowe about eleven o'clock. At this point, they will be spaced out, so they'll be riding in very small groups or, you know, just single riders coming through, because it's about twenty-five miles into our route when we reach the town of Stowe. We will have support vehicles on the route that will be designated with flags. Riders are expected and enforced to ride the rules of the road. There are no exceptions. And we, I have worked with Stowe Police that we do have a police detail where they deem it is necessary. And, yeah, so that's kind of our, from that to nutshell.
That's great. Thank you. It's, congratulations and for the success you've already had, so.
We may go down again because our internet's iffy, so if people lose us, that's why.
All right, well, we're, we're here for now. So let's, let's take a motion.
Before you do that, can I just make one suggestion?
Of course.
True. Can I suggest you talk to our chief about maybe a second detail officer where you make a left on Harvard Road? It's a hill and it's bad sight distance. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna suggest to the board that we make it a condition of motion at all. I'm just gonna suggest to you, double check with him. If he didn't raise it, it's probably fine. And if he says nats, it's okay, then it's okay. I just want to raise that.
Yes, absolutely.
Madam Chair, with the approval of public safety officials, I move to approve the use of Stowe Public Ways for the National Multiple Sclerosis Society Ride for the Vineyard Mainland Bike Ride on Saturday, September eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Great.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Best wishes.
Thank you.
Okay, update records access officers. We, we don't have to read them, we can, we just have the motion, right?
Yeah, so this is just, most of the people that we had listed no longer work here. This is just an update with the current employees. No changes other than no employees.
Right, yeah.
Madam Chair, I move to modify the roster of super records access officers for the town of Stowe, according to the list presented by the town administrator.
Second.
Yes.
Can I ask that you make a super records access and records access officer? It's, we're updating both.
Madam Chair, I move to modify, I withdraw my previous motion. I move to modify the roster of super records access officers and records access officers for the town of Stowe, according to the list presented by the town administrator.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay. The Stowe Educational Incentive Program goes away. This is just finishing what we started at town meeting.
Yes, correct.
Right.
Madam Chair, I move to rescind the employee educational incentive program for the town, for town of Stowe employees in accord, in accordance with the May two thousand and twenty-one annual town meeting vote on Article twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. On the MBTA Advisory Board, I am willing to serve as chair, which, I mean, as our representative, which I guess they assume I am already, so we don't have to take a vote.
Nope, so we will send a letter in notifying them.
All right.
Town Administrator's Report. Hi, I'm going to keep it super brief. So, I think I'm gonna just skip to, I'm on vacation next week. So, everything else can wait. No, I, so I am on vacation next week. I, I will be up in the White Mountains, so I will have limited cell phone coverage, but obviously if something comes up, you all can reach me. I have a tentative start date for our new assistant town administrator.
Whoa.
I don't want to release too much because she just gave her notice and she hasn't fully told folks that she works with. But we're tentatively planning for, we were hoping for the seventh of September, I think it'll be the thirteenth, but I will let you all know that. And I will plan to have her at the next meeting for introductions. I will likely ask that, even though it's not required in our charter to appoint her, I will ask that you formally appoint her so that she is on a regular appointment schedule and where she will fill, fill in for me in my absence. It should be under an appointment process. She should be sworn in and so on. As was mentioned earlier, I would love to just wish Joe Landry well in his retirement. As everyone knows, he has been a staple of the town for more than thirty years in so many departments and so many aspects. So we will greatly miss him and thank him for all he's done for the town. I want to thank Jesse Stedman, Kathy Saffara, Allison Tool, and Chief Solissey, and all of their respective staff that assisted us last week on our very spur-of-the-moment visit from Congresswoman Lori Trahan. It was great to have her here. I think it was a, I think it went over extremely well. It was a very successful event. I think she could have stayed here all day and chatted with us. I think we could have had her stay all day and chat with us, if only the weather was better for our tour and our walk. But I think it was great overall. And that is all I have.
All right. Okay, and then, okay, minutes from July twenty-seventh. Anybody have any changes that didn't get through? And now take a motion to accept those minutes.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the minutes of the July twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one meeting.
Second.
All in fa, oh.
Nope.
Oh, you're just, oh, you're just going, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. And now.